All just and thanks the first people of the Hunkamian Language Group on whose traditional and unceded territories we teach, learn and live. Welcome. Um, let's see, we recognition visitors, we have no, actually, you have some visitors, but we'll recognize them later on. Um, announcements, trustees, I think there's a couple announcements. Uh, trustee Yang, go ahead.
Thank you very much, chairperson. On November 3rd, 2025, uh, the Richmond School District will recognize the dedication and contributions of its support staff. With more than 1,000 support staff roles across the district, these individuals perform essential functions that directly contribute to the overall success of our schools and the achievement of our students. The commitment demonstrated by our support staff, whether through direct engagement with students or by ensuring the effective operation of our schools, highlights their critical role in fostering a strong and thriving educational environment. On behalf of the Board of Education, I extend my heartfelt gratitude to all support staff for making the Richmond School District an exceptional place to learn and lead. Thank you for your tireless efforts and for being the backbone of our district. Your contributions are deeply valued and we are truly grateful for all you do.
All right, thank you. Uh, trustee Wong, you have an announcement to read?
Thank you, chairman. Remembrance days every day, every year on November 11, Canadians person in a silence moment of remembrance reflecting on sacrifice of those who have served and continue to serve our country, both at home and abroad. These individuals play a total role in safeguarding our peace and freedom and the bridge as to lead the lives, the lives that we cherish today. In recognition of our efforts as a district to commit to truth and reconciliation, we also shine a spotlight on our invaluable role of the First Nations, British and Indian people of Canada, who have a long and proud history of military service to our country. As many as 12,000 indigenous Canadian Canadians demonstrated immense courage and made significant sacrifice during two world wars and the Korean War. This remember stays, we extend our heartfelt appreciation to the memories and diverse contributions of all our retinents.
Thank you. All right, um, adoption of agenda trustees, is there anything if you have the agenda, anything that needs to be added? Not seeing any additions, kind of look for a mover in a secondary moved by trustee sergeant, second by trustee to blot me. Thank you. All in favor? Great, wonderful. Okay, presentations briefs and special recognition. Well, we're very pleased that we have a special recognition, uh, to give out tonight, and it's to May Ying. May is a teacher at Richmond, uh, Senior High. Um, and recently, uh, may was awarded the 2025 Prime Minister's Award for Regional Certificate of Achievement. And I'm just going to read the write-up here and then I'm going to ask, um, May, I need to come to the table. I am pleased to introduce May Ying, an IB English, English, ELL and LSS teacher at Richmond Secondary, who has been awarded a regional certificate of achievement for the 2025 Prime Minister's Award for Teaching Excellence. This award honors outstanding elementary and secondary school teachers in all disciplines and early childhood educators for their innovative practices. May brings care and innovation to everything she does. Her classroom is a place where students find their voice, connect with others and build confidence. Whether helping students overcome anxiety through leadership programs or mentoring them to go on to earn prestigious scholarship, May's work has made a lasting impact on students and the entire community. Having one of our own teachers recognized with the Prime Minister's Award is both an honor and a proud moment for the Richmond School District and its entire community. Uh, this achievement shines a spotlight on the passion, innovation and excellence that define our educators and inspire our students every day. Can we please invite May Ying and Anita Kwan, President of Richmond Secondary, uh, uh, school to come forward? They'll come forward and, um, let's see. Come to the table. You know, but you gotta, if you can introduce yourself and then, May, I think you have some words you want to?
I, I do. Thank you. Um, good evening, trustees, superintendents, administrators, RTA representative, parents, members of Richmond School District community. It is a privilege to speak with all of you tonight on this inceded ancestral lands of the First Peoples of the Hunkamian Language Group. I am truly grateful for the opportunity to teach, learn, unlearn and relearn on these traditional territories. As an educator, a learner at heart, a proud member of this district, I'm honored to be here before you this evening. Earlier this month, as mentioned, I was humbled to receive, receive the regional certificate of achievement for the 2025 Prime Minister Award for Teaching Excellence. I wanted to begin by acknowledging the incredible community of students, staff, families, colleagues, leaders who've made this moment possible. This recognition is not mine alone. It is a reflection of trust, relationships and sheer purpose we've built together. This award reflects the values we hold dear in Richmond. Student success, equity, inclusion, innovation and community. At this time, I like to just, um, recognize Irene Doe and her son, Jason Mung. The initial nomination was forwarded by them and Irene is here behind me. And I want to say that for, um, because of nomination, this is possible for a district. Nicole Jan is my former GBC teacher candidate who edit the 6,000-word package. It is a rigorous package. Um, to Jason Heagle, uh, my partner in co-creating the inquiry into leadership through experiential learning course, without his support, the student leadership program grounded in First Peoples' principled learning would not have been successful. And so I thank him for his vision and leadership. To Anita Kwan, my school principal, and Michelle Levitt, who's my Michelle, um, my colleague, fellow advocate for student success and mentorship. Thank you for your letters of support. To the student leaders, alumni and many former Richmond High students, parents who contributed the reflection and the supporting letters, their contribution for this nomination process, their stories are woven into every single line. This award is a tribute to your journeys, to their resilience and belief in the power of public education. To my family behind me, thank you for accompanying me to this board meeting and standing proudly by my side. In closing, I wanted to thank the board here and everyone here who's witnessing this recognition. I am proud to serve in this district that embraces diversity as a strength, inquiry as a pathway for transformation, equity and reconciliation as guiding principles. Thank you for walking alongside me on this incredible journey. Thank you.
Uh, Anita, you're not on the script. Oh, sorry. Yeah. Would you like to say a few words?
Um, I wasn't going to speak, but I, I just want to echo what May has said. I mean, it's a true accomplishment. Uh, May isn't an excellent educator. She mentors, uh, new teachers. Um, she, uh, has a wealth of experience with her and, uh, a well-deserved, uh, recognition and acknowledgement. So, um, just kudos to May and, um, uh, and all, everything that she brings to our school community and to our district.
You know, I believe, uh, our trustees probably would like to say a few words or ask a couple of few questions. Then I'm going to start this right here. Any trustees here want to say anything or, hey, trustee Yang?
Thank you very much, chairperson, and I'm so glad to see you tonight, uh, missing. And, um, you know, when I first, uh, learned about this news, you know, I, I was, I really was overjoyed. Um, and I'll tell you why, because you know, as a former ELL student, to see, uh, an ELL teacher reach one of the highest achievements in the country as an educator, that is something that is exemplary and it shows the Richmond way that it doesn't matter what language you speak when you come here, uh, at, at, at first, you will have a community support, you will have excellent educators who will back you up all the way to ensure that you succeed in this country. So, you know, uh, I think I speak on behalf of everybody when I say, um, uh, uh, to express my deep gratitude for all that you've done, um, uh, for our district, for your school community, uh, and I wish you all the best, uh, as you continue that work. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Yang. Uh, trustee Dublany?
Um, well, congratulations. I mean, that's an amazing achievement and, um, and you're so deserving. Uh, I, you know, would have to say that, that you're an inspiration to all educators and students and you exemplify what this school district, you know, wants to see for each and every one of our students and the, the leaders. So, um, we really appreciate your example and, uh, I think it's just a fantastic award and something, you know, that should be really, um, celebrated throughout the community. So, um, kudos to you and everyone who supported you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Trustee Belisa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Trustees, teachers, staff, students. Now, if you have something to say as a message, as a vision for the good of the district, what?
Everything here, as I'm seeing right now in front of me, our focus is on the learner. Continue to have that aspect and then teach our learners to lead and lead with passion, integrity and inclusion. Continue doing what we're doing. Celebrate those, yeah, successes.
Okay, uh, trustee Larson is on the screen.
Oh, she's muted.
Oh, I think you're muted.
Sorry. Congratulations. Um, your introduction was just beautiful, um, and, and generous. I, I love how you included the success of the relationships that you have worked on with, um, and built with, with others. And, uh, your passion and wisdom is contagious. I, I have no, no reason to, to see why there would be anyone else that would have been named in this particular, um, presentation that you have received, or not presentation, but how you have been nominated and why. So, thank you again. It was beautiful.
Trustee Wong?
So I just can say a congratulation to you. So I just through your conversation, I know that you, because really difference past the leadership things and the school and the school and the district community. So you are making really collaborations and complication to all other departments to make your task is successful. Thank you. Congratulations.
Um, May, uh, you know, everyone sort of talks sometimes about leaving a legacy. Like, you know, when you get old and retired, you know, what have you done in your life and, 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 you know, uh, wherever you made a difference and, um, aside from winning these awards, and I'm sure you've won other awards as well. Um, the kids that you've taught, the staff that you've worked with and staff that you have mentored, uh, like they are your legacy and, uh, and it's a very, very rich and, and, uh, meaningful legacy. And that, uh, like I say, our focus is on the learners and your focus has always been on that. And, uh, for that, like I say, we, we really appreciate it. And like I said, I'm so glad you're working for us. Um, but, uh, I hope you enjoy this and I'm glad that your family's here to be here as well, because it is a major accomplishment. And, uh, and like I said, we do appreciate you very much and, and we wish you the best in everything else you do. So.
So, so proud to be a Richmond educator. And so, thank you, everyone. And so, continue what you're doing. You're doing amazing job. So that we can continue this process, right?
You know, we, we wrote, written a letter here for you to go in your, in your book. Um, the Board of Education of School District Number 38 wishes to formally express its gratitude and appreciation for your outstanding contribution to education and student learning. Your recent achievement of the regional certificate of achievement through the Prime Minister Awards for Teaching Excellence is a testament of your dedication, creativity and impact as an educator. Your and reach their full potential. Through your leadership, mentorship and compassion, you have made lasting difference in the lives of students, colleagues and the broader school community. The Board extends its sincere appreciation for the passion and professionalism you bring to your work each day. We are proud to have you as part of our Richmond School District and we thank you for your exempli, or we thank you for exemplifying the values of excellence and care that define our schools. So I'm gonna, and, uh, trustees, can we get up? Because I think we're going to do a picture here. Well.
But I'm taking the photos.
This is your thing. You, oh. Okay, next on our agenda is questions from the public. Uh, just want to read this before we get going here. Before we begin the questions from the public portion of the agenda, I would like to remind everyone that participation in this session must be respected, must be respectful in accordance with the District Code of Conduct and Policy 201 Board of Operation. As per Policy 201, each speaker will have up to two minutes to ask questions or make a brief statement, and the total time allotted for this portion of the meeting is, is 30 minutes. The Board expects comments to relate to items on the public agenda and to be meaningful and courteous. The Chair may intervene or end participation if conduct becomes disrespectful or inconsistent with the Code of Conduct. Thank you for your cooperation in maintaining a respectful and orderly meeting. And I'm sure we're not going to have any issues. So, uh, questions, uh, if you, now, um, generally we have people come up. Okay, so if you have a question, Liz, you're going to go first. So that's fine. We know. If anyone else has questions, uh, we have, uh, uh, someone who's going to take a list, speaker's list. So if you want to ask questions after Liz, uh, please see, uh, Rob on the side there and he'll record your name and, um, right? Come back. All right. Liz?
This is Liz Baberstock, President Richmond Teachers Association. And, um, actually, my questions, um, they're, they're actually, uh, with regards to both the enrollment update and the Richmond International Education update, um, and I suppose partly on the new business. Um, but, uh, as I look at, um, the enrollment update and the Richmond International Education update and, and know, and recognize, um, the situation that, uh, the district is in now, you're, you're down money versus what you predicted. That is a very serious, uh, situation. Um, and I, I know that your focus is on the learner. It, it's read throughout this report, um, that you want to keep cuts away from the learner. Um, and that is important. I think one of the things that as you're going to have to make some difficult decisions is, you know, caution on new initiatives. If you're asking people to do more with less, this isn't the right time. And perhaps that is speaking a bit to emotion that is coming up because we have curriculum, we have what teachers are already doing in their classrooms. Do we need to do more? Do you need to stretch your staff more? So that's one, um, piece. And those are kind of questions to leave trustees. Um, my other questions really are about, um, you know, sort of the predictions for enrollment for next year. And I'm not talking about domestic, but really international education. And I ask that because, you know, in the past, um, our budget actually relied on international education to about 10%. We were down to about 7%, but as we are now into this declining enrollment, revenue sources matter even more. Um, and I know there's a report tonight, um, but I do, uh, you know, worry about this because there are only so many cuts you can make before it does get closer and closer to schools in the classroom. The, so that's sort of a prediction side of things and that I, you know, that'll be kind of a takeaway question, but to think about and international education, because as I, I read through the report, there is a theme about expanding, um, augmenting, um, Richmond International Education. And the brief actually speaks very particularly to communication with the board, schools and the public. But what I notice is actually missing is partner groups. And so that is something I, I leave the board because if there are expansions and they do involve RTA members or other people, I think, um, the involvement of partner groups at some place would actually be helpful. So those are questions I leave you. I know that they won't be answered tonight, um, but to keep in the back of your mind as you're, you know, going through what I know is difficult times ahead and it's not a place that I wish for any of you to be. I know that your focus will be on the learner. I also know as a group, you will be consulting with partner groups and we most definitely appreciate the partnership, um, that we find in Richmond, which I do believe strongly is unique, um, and was spoken to tonight, uh, by the recipient to the Prime Minister's Award. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. All right, Rob, who's next on the speaker's list?
Hello, my name's Connie, uh, the president of the RDPA. So, uh, I, I want to ask the question as, um, a lazy whatever. So she asked it, but I got another second question is about the AED and the La La Sungs kits. So, um, my question is, so how many, uh, La La Sungs kits? So you guys provide to grade 10 student to learn the course from this year in September? So since?
Sorry, are you asking how many kits we give to the students?
Yeah, how many La La Sungs kits?
We don't give any kits to the students.
So how you guys is train the student to learn, uh, to use the kit, the safe kit?
We haven't.
You haven't do that? So, but I heard that so, uh, the districts already provide the course in the
All our schools.
Grade 10 student, eh?
All our
In the PE class.
All our schools, uh, have an Aloxone kit and, and, uh, AED, uh, but they're not given to any particular person. They're stored in the office. And so now as for who is learning how to use them, uh, there's, uh, every school has a team of, um, students and staff who might want to help me here with, if, I'm not sure, is there students involved?
First aid, first aid team.
Yeah, so the first aid team, which consists of
Of staff and students.
Staff and students. All right.
So is it only for, um, the first safe?
First aid.
First aid, yeah, cause is it not for all grade 10 students?
You know, uh, trust, uh, sorry, superintendent, you see?
That's why I need your, uh, all the parts. So
Well, we're, we're through the chair as this item is not, uh, to this agenda, would be more than happy, would be more than happy, staff would be more than happy to provide the information that you're requesting. Uh, but because it's not on the agenda today, uh, when, there was no presentation on AEDs and Aloxone, I would be more than happy to follow up with you after the meeting to provide, to respond to your questions. Feel free to send me an email and staff will make sure that we, we give you a detailed response to your questions if that's helpful.
I saw this items in the minutes, uh, 34, so report. So that's why I just asked for that question. Yeah. But it's okay. You can send me the email. I, I, I know you guys cannot just ask for it right now. So it's okay. So I just want to know, is it the grade 10 student everyone to learn this course or, or just some of the students?
So Connie, you know, after, let's talk, we talk after the, because like I say, it's not on the agenda, but you know, we can't answer your question. So.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Are there any more? Oh, thanks. Okay, Connie, Phyllis Tang.
Hi, everyone. I'm Phyllis and I'm a Richmond resident. I'm very happy to be able to see everyone here again. I've noticed on our agenda item today, uh, point number eight A, there's a new business on emotion regarding substance use awareness and prevention week. Um, I've, uh, just read that paragraph carefully and I just wanted to make a comment. I think that's a, uh, wonderful thing, um, to be provided to, um, students, staff, members and, um, any stakeholders who may be interested in learning more about, uh, drugs, substance use and awareness. Cause I think it ties into, um, one of my passions for, um, mental health and wellbeing for students, which, uh, I know in past meetings I've talked about and discussed. Um, it links really closely to, uh, everyone's mental health in general, when they know more about, um, various substances, um, be it, uh, things that are commonly known about, or maybe there are other substances that are, uh, not so commonly well-known. It's actually quite important, I believe, for, um, the general public, uh, addition, like including students to be aware of what is out there, uh, be it on the market or not. And, um, so that they can make, uh, wise and good choices for their own wellbeing, for their personal development, growth and how, uh, various substances would affect, um, I guess their future or various consequences or implications of, uh, being engaged with substance use. So I just think that's a really good idea and I want to thank, um, trustee Rob Lisa for, uh, at least, um, proposing that. Cause I think, uh, when parents, caregivers as well as, um, other community leaders are aware of what, uh, students are learning, I think it's creates like a better, um, synergy for everyone to grow and develop, yeah, in a, in a very positive, yeah, approach that would add value to development of the entire city. So I just want to say thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Thank you. Um, we also have, uh, Sarah Wang. Sarah, come on, come on, come on up.
Um, hello, members of the board. I am currently a student and I was just, so as the personal learning time schedule has been in place for about more than a month now, I've noticed that the overall feedback from students, parents and teachers has been very, like overwhelmingly negative regarding this new schedule. And I know that last year there was a
Backup, sorry, what scheduling you referring to?
Um, the change in the personal learning time schedule.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you know what? Um, that's not an agenda item. And so, um, uh, so we don't take, we only take questions on the agenda items for the evening. Uh, if you stick around afterwards, catch us in the hallway, um, I'm sure someone can, you know, talk to you about it. But, uh, after our formal, uh, uh, meeting, uh, we only take questions regarding agenda items.
Okay, I see.
Right?
Thank you for your
Okay, uh, I believe that is questions from the public? questions from the public. We will also have a second round of questions later on. Our executive report, Superintendent, you see?
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. Trustees, I often, this, it's always a wonderful opportunity to, to be able to provide a few remarks during the public board meetings. I think we started off tonight with an example of what makes the Richmond School District the best place to learn and lead. I think we can all be proud that if, you know, one of our teachers in this district received the Prime Minister's Award. And I think that's certainly kudos to Ms. Hang. I know, I know she's already left, but I had the opportunity of visiting her class on two occasions, both at Richmond Secondary School and also the cohort of students at UBC last year. So I saw firsthand the incredible work she's doing. And that's a really good segue to really acknowledge the incredible dedication of our teachers, as support staff and administrators that work in this district. And I think it's important to recognize the excellence that makes our district one of the leading districts in the province. And I think everyone is well aware that our students perform in most categories, almost in every category, above the provincial average in all the matrix. So, and I think, I know that some of my colleagues in the room today, fellow educators, both administrators, and I think you heard from the president of the RTA moments ago as well. So September has been a very busy startup, and it's one, I know that in conversations with colleagues as I make my way through the, throughout the district, school startup is, brings its own level of energy. But I just want to commend the incredible work of staff, both school-based staff and staff who work in our central departments for their diligence and the dedication that they bring to their, their work each day. And I think it's important to recognize that it doesn't mean that from time to time we don't have issues that we need to be addressed, whether it's parents have questions or concerns about their child. And we often say that if you have any questions or concerns, it's always the best place to always start off inside the school level, because that's what makes the work happens. I just want to commend our students. I would also like to, I would also like to commend our students, because one of the things that we know is that school, school is a better place when students are engaged, when students are learning, and when the good work is happening. And it's definitely worth noting. And of course, to parents and families, we thank you very much for trusting us with your children and for your support as we work together to ensure that your students are doing well, your children are doing well, and that the way that happens is when we work collaboratively in a way that we are doing this together as a team. And so we certainly appreciate your, your cooperation. We also, I'll just take a moment to mention that you're probably aware that the board is working through a process with our partner groups, and some of you have been part of that process in providing feedback around the strategic plan. So the board is, is the final steps, I would say, the final stages in the, of the developing the 2026, 2030 strategic plan. And we are very much excited about that plan, and we hope to, to have approval of the board, hopefully, early in the new year. The board is going through that process and certainly has engaged all our partner groups in that, through that process. So we're excited to build on the successes that, and prepare our students for a very bright future, consistent with where we are today. Thank you again for, 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 for working with us and indeed making that this district a wonderful place to lead and learn. And I think you all know where that comes from in terms of our vision statement. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair. That's my, my update for tonight.
Thank you. Okay, move on to item six, approval of minutes from prior meetings. There is a record of an in-camera meeting of the board held Wednesday, September 24th, 2025. We also had a regular meeting of the board held Wednesday, September 24th, 2025, and those minutes are up for approval. The minutes are in your package unless there's any errors or omissions.
Move.
You want?
Yeah, move.
You're gonna move it, okay. Moved by trustee Wong, I'm looking for a second there? Question. Okay.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. I'm just looking through the records of the meeting from last month, and on the, on the item for the school traffic safety motion, the vote was, I believe, four to three on the agenda minutes, but just reviewing records, I'm not sure if all trustees had indicated their vote correctly. So I just wanted to make sure if trustees wanted to correct the record that they have the opportunity to do so now.
All right, do any trustees want to correct their vote from? Okay, not seeing any hands up, all right? All right, so we had it moved by trustee Wong, a second. Any questions? Oh, in the minutes, maybe, okay. Let's keep going in all favor. Stuff the minutes as is. Thank you. Okay, this is arising from prior minutes. Item A 2025, 26 enrollment update. We have a report from the Secretary Treasurer attached in your package. Secretary Treasurer Wang, do you want to add anything to it, or?
Sure, thank you, Chairperson. So I will just provide a quick highlight of this report. The report is on page 18 of the public meeting package. Every year, the school districts were required to report the full-time equivalent student numbers to the Ministry of Education for funding purposes. For the first time in eight years, the school district is showing currently a slight decline in our total K-12 regular eligible student enrollment. So we're showing, we reported a decrease of 160 regular student FTE compared to the previous school year. And the international program experienced a similar trend with about 170 fewer students compared to last year. So this decline obviously will have a notable impact on the budgeted revenue. And as we work through the amended budget process, any adjustments in the budgeted revenues and expenses will be certainly reflected in the amended budget coming to the board for approval at the end of February 2026. So that's my report. Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you. Trustees, are there any questions for Wang? Trustee Yang, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairperson. Yeah, just two questions, and certainly the numbers do indicate a decrease for us at this time. And, you know, we, you know, we have data that indicates that we have a lower kindergarten cohort heading into this year. And so I'm just wondering if that's consistent with age demographics, you know, with certain years, there's different levels of birth. And so I'm just wondering if any of that factored into the decline in this year's kindergarten registration?
Yeah, the kindergarten registration, we certainly, this year, we had a smaller cohort compared to last year by almost 200 students. A couple of things that's related to this factor. Number one is the general school age, the age, the, the age three to five, that's the student, the, the population base for the kindergarten cohort. So that total population is not, definitely is not growing in the city of Richmond. The second thing is the participation rate out of that age population coming to Richmond School District is relatively lower compared to the previous years. The reasons are unclear as to why that, that is the case. So we're, we will, our planning department, certainly our staff, we're very experienced in student population monitoring projection, will continue to monitor the, the trend in that age cohort.
Thank you. And then just a second question around, and this relates to course offerings and timetable flexibility as we go into the year with lower FTEs. You know, what, what, what has staff heard from folks on the ground regarding challenges related to that? Because, you know, certainly there, there have been concerns from what I've been hearing about, you know, because you have less student enrollment, some courses, there's, you know, less flexibility to enroll, you know, classes are more tightly packed. So that means that, you know, there may be challenges or for, for, you know, diversifying the, the options for students.
So that's a really, really good question. A couple of things. This total student enrollment is declining a little bit at overall K-12 level. However, the, the, the more of the decline happens in the lower level, in the primary level, K-23. So in that, in the edu, in the elementary school staffing process, we are actually complying with the collective agreement language. You know, we are making sure that we have the class sizes following the collective agreement language requirement. And also, we are seeing spaces in, in our elementary school divisions. So the pressure is actually not in the, in the elementary. In the elementary, we're staffed properly. So that's number one. Number two is, in the secondary level, we are actually seeing a increase, a total head count increase in the secondary level. Even the FTE is, is not necessarily increasing, but, and that is because some of the courses are being offered at the online Richmond, Richmond Virtual School. So, and as to the secondary level staffing, it's, the consistent enrollment is pretty consistent from school to school. So in, in that, the pressure is, is actually not happening in the secondary level.
Okay. Trustee Sergeant, followed by trustee Beliza.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's important to note perhaps the reasons why we're seeing a mid, a mid-year change, and I think that's quite rare. You know, we, our staff project down to the, down to the penny, but also down to the students. And so to do quite a, a big mid, mid-year amendment to our budget is, is a really big deal. And I'm wondering if one of the reasons why we're seeing this shift, there's quite a few things happening in the world, but also in our own country, the immigration rules have changed. And so I think the intent is to ensure that young people can buy homes, et cetera, but there are definitely ramifications on the other end. You see some now where colleges, universities, and also us. So this is kind of a metro problem right now, but I wanted, wonder if you could speak to just that, that bit around the international visas exchange that could be impacting us?
Yeah, for sure. Thank you, trustee Sergeant, and through the chair, that's a really good question. As for the reasons for this downturn of our overall enrollment, so a couple of reasons. Number one is the federal immigration policy changes. The federal government introduced the work permit and study permit cap in December 2024. And since then, you know, we're seeing less non-permanent residents coming into the country and into the province with work permit and study permit. Now, even though these caps are on adults, but they, when they came over the last three years, especially post-COVID, they brought children with them. And these children, they are eligible students in our system. So we're seeing, you know, that, that is being one of the major factors impacting our student population. Second reason is basically relating to the economic fundamentals between BC and also comparatively between BC and other provinces. According to BC stats, first quarter of 2025, BC is experiencing a net interprovincial migration outflow, meaning population is moving out of BC and moving to other provinces, for example, Alberta, right? Because of economic situations between different provinces, it changes all the time. That's dynamic is happening, impacting the total population move. Secondly, even within the metro area, the lower mainland, we're seeing the trend that the population, general population is moving from the western communities or municipalities to the eastern municipalities. So that's also in the play. And certainly, this enrollment downturn is not unique to Richmond, to the city of Richmond. And perhaps you've seen other school districts enrollment report as well. We, we are seeing a consistent enrollment pattern across the lower mainland and also across the province. So thank you for that question.
So just to follow up, I think it's important when we meet with our MPs to just say there are, there are pros and cons of changing the immigration rules, and that I think it's important for everyone to know that, because in the end, you want the economy still good, you want housing to actually be lower. I'm not sure that's happening. So I think we can remind them to, to maybe do a check on their initiatives and the impacts that it's happening on our ground. Thanks.
Okay, trustee Beliza, followed by trustee, or Tabani and trustee Wong.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To further, you know, question of the trustee sergeant, we know that the enrollment and federal immigration policy changes. What I'd like to ask is from the Secretary Treasurer, whether there is a mitigation strategy to address the structural change, and especially when the trend continues. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, trustee Beliza for the question and through the chair. You know, certainly, the, the, when there is an enrollment decline, we will see less revenue coming into the school district. But at the same time, you know, we are working, we're looking at our income statement is you have different strategies. Certainly, like I said in the report, the revenues and expenses, they will be reflected and presented to the board for your approval by February.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Trustee Tabani, followed by trustee Wong.
Yeah, well, you know, and I you know, federal immigration on our, on our enrollment and, and many other districts as well in the metro area. I think the other thing too, affordable housing and aging in place. You know, a lot of people in Richmond in certain areas, and we can see that in our enrollment trends when we break it down into neighborhoods. We can see that there are neighborhoods that, that are declining because of the, you know, the aging in place and, and lack of affordability. So that's definitely part of it. And, you know, this is not the first time we've, I mean, this is kind of the first time we've had a big decline all of a sudden. But, you know, a number of years ago, we were in funding protection because we had low enrollment. And so we had to make do then too. And, and there were, there were some funding implications on that one as well. So it's not the first time we've weathered the storm, and we will weather it again. But yes, it is, it is concerning for sure.
Trustee Wong.
Thank you, Chairman. My question is on the page 20. So I see that you compare the student enrollment with the last year, 2024, 2025. So, so that's mean we receive impact two millions this year, right? So is that any impact to our, just like, I, I think that the student enrollment with the K, so we will consider the, just like the staff adjustment? Or just like save the money?
Okay, yeah, thank you, trustee Wong, for that question. And through the chair, you know, we are looking at, so September and October, we have been working on finalizing the student enrollment numbers. So right now, we just finalized the student enrollment. So the next step is we're going to get into, so HR and finance, we're going to work together to look at the total staffing levels. We'll do some detailed data analysis and reconciliations to look at that as well. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Are there any more questions? Okay, thank you very much, Secretary Treasurer Wang. We are now going to move on to our Richmond International Education Annual Update. Now. Now, is Sean here?
She'd be here.
Sean, are you here?
He's coming.
On his way? Okay. Yeah, should we take a recess? Okay, you know what, folks, we're going to take about ten-minute recess and give chance for Sean to find parking and get here. So feel free to stretch and walk around and education annual update. And we have a report from the director of the Richmond International Education attached. Sean, take it away.
Great. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, as always, for inviting us to and adding us to your agenda this evening. As always, it's my pleasure on behalf of my colleagues to do a, present a verbal rendition of our written report that was submitted to you last week. And and I also, as you can see, I have a special co-presenter with me today. So as we go through my part of the report, she'll also participate. And at the end of our presentation, as always, we're happy to take questions. I have to remember to do this. So our so today, our our presentation is broken down as it typically is into sort of a recap of what programs that we do offer as international program in the school district. Talk a little bit about the year that was, of course. Our report here is our annual review, a snapshot of the year that was. And of course, a little bit of discussion of what year is so far and maybe moving forward as well. Talk about our some of the successes of our program, some of the challenges as well. And of course, as I mentioned, I have a and that answer questions from all of you. Our program, as you know, we offer a wide range, a suite of programs, quite a lot, a long-term study, which again is from a single semester to a year. Many of our students stay until graduation or multiple years. We also have short-term programs, which is individuals, these are for individual students that come pretty much twelve months of the year, but during the school year for one month or longer. Students coming in groups for six weeks, eight weeks, or a little bit longer as well. These groups are customized in some cases, otherwise they're not. And they, of course, go into our schools and have an immersive experience in our schools, learning, of course, improving their English, experiencing classes and making friendships in our in our schools. Well, we have a summer camp that continues on as well, with that's July and August, anywhere from three weeks to six weeks. I'll mention a little later on, we've made some, I think, some tweaks to our summer camp moving forward, that I think will be beneficial for our students as well, moving moving forward. As I mentioned, we do see an increase in our groups, a number of groups coming from various countries as well. One of the, many of of you will remember our Shenzhen program up until 2019, and the little pandemic kind of put that on hiatus for us. So it started last year, the discussions with the Education Bureau, the Nanchan Education Bureau, that was our first, really started our Shenzhen program, a much larger program, sort of re-engaged. So we've had an opportunity to reboot that program and looking forward to our first group of students, secondary, middle school, and elementary coming in Lunar New Year in the upcoming school year. So that was a very exciting and positive development for us. Our enrollment. Of course, we also have our, continue to have our connections program as well that we offer to students. And this is a way for them, our international students that choose to do so, to come into our district, come into and and build connections and sort of, we continue to learn English and practice English and do some field trips sometimes on weekends as well. We have a Let's Learn English program for international parents that are in our program. So they're here with their children and in our district, so they have a chance to to take this course. Again, of course, this 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 program, and it's a great way for them to come in and make some other friends, some peers of other parents in the district, and and enjoy themselves and and also ask questions, obviously, about what's going on in schools and report cards and parenting interviews. This is in addition to what we do on a regular basis, is a parent sessions all the time, pre-departure orientation virtually, also when the students are here, include the parents as well, the ones that are here. And then we have ongoing throughout the year, information sessions and points of contact with our parents in person as well as through newsletters and other ways. But this is another way that that we do it. And you'll see the pictures in our presentation of our students, and you'll see a picture of our current group of of parents that are in this program. And the enrollment data right there. So what we did see last year is a bit of a decline from the year before. The 2023 year was an exception for for the districts. It's sort of the post-pandemic bubble was was burst in that sense. So we've seen a decline. We had about, the FTE number there was for long-term study was seven hundred and thirty students. But we did see maintain the diversity of program, my students coming from a wide variety of of countries and locations that continued. That was something that we saw during the pandemic and has continued on. We also, just as a reminder, we have continuous enrollment. Most of our, obviously, long-term study students come in September, and then second semester, January, February. But we also accept students throughout the year. So again, this is like a snapshot of what the year sort of was. And and moving forward, again, we'll have to see how the short-term numbers, the numbers move forward throughout the year. And again, our summer camp was typical for the year before. One thing we haven't seen a return to yet at summer camp is our programs, that we saw a bit of a bump up in that. But certainly, we've had sort of a stabilization of of our participant levels in our summer camp. Overall, the participation levels from parts of Northeast Asia, particularly China and South Korea, have lowered, have dropped, with a stable number of participants from South America, particularly Brazil, and other parts of Europe, sorry, or Europe and Italy and Germany. We've seen an increase in some parts of Southeast Asia, particularly Thailand, and then other parts of Europe, so France, Belgium, and Spain particularly. And we've seen a small increase of students from New Zealand. So we've been able to continue and add to our diversity of our programming. And this is a snapshot last year of our short-term student numbers as well, including our summer camp. And these are our short-term students that come for one month or up to three months throughout the year. We also have, what's not included in this number are, we have student, school groups that come for one day or two days for cultural exchanges. Our schools have always been wonderfully accommodating and excited to welcome students for these one-day or two-day exchanges that continue to happen. You don't see that as a snapshot in these numbers here. Our summer camp, again, was wonderful. We've been lucky with the wonderful weather, students, a lot of happy faces, and going off to our field trips and engaging and making friendships throughout summer camp as well. But again, our our summer camp on the individual student participation side is pretty, pretty stable. But again, on the group side is an area where we have not seen it return to the pre-pandemic levels yet. Our challenges of our program, you know, moving forward, there's continued pressures on our program, but all I E Ps within our peer group here in Metro Vancouver, B C, across the country, but also across other receiving countries. And a lot of that still is the lingering impacts of COVID nineteen, still will, that will still continue on to next year, probably. Just we will increase competition, not just here within our own community in Metro Vancouver, but across the the country as well. Geopolitical dynamics continue just only here in our country, but also in the areas where our students come from. There's still an impact, an ongoing impact there. Of course, the inflationary costs, the cost of flights, and that still remains to be a challenge. Governmental policies and initiatives, IRCC processing times, for example, that's still a a challenge. Also, the the student capacity numbers that are still in place and will be in place probably till 2027, and most likely a bit longer at the PSI level, post-secondary school level. But it does have a cumulative effect on on K to twelve as well. Of course, these things can change. They may change, but all indications are, and also, really, there's a sort of an a decline in Canada as a preferred study destination, that other countries are are now a destination. And that's, again, a reflection of cumulative impacts and and whatnot, that some of which that we control and other things that we don't control. And of course, I think, just like, like businesses, you know, people in times of uncertainty, just hang tight. They have, they take pause and wait to understand what these impacts will be and what they can do about it, and then decide to to be a little cautious, of course, and then move forward at perhaps at a later date. Field trips. Again, this is something that we have continued to offer our students. It's an important part of our program. The students, of course, are coming here to learn English and and access our B C curriculum and then support from our teachers and have experiences academic side, but also on the cul- experienced candidate, bring them together, other international students from all across the district, gives us a chance to to participate with them and see them in person and engage with them as well. And these field trips are optional. And but they're well, the petition participation levels are remain high, that the students were almost always fill up our buses to go on these trips and 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 very positive experiences for the students and for us as well. Of course, hopefully, all of you are connected to our socials, and you can find pictures and whatnot in our social media as well, that you'll continue to do so. We've also were able to, again, a reminder of our interculturalism bursary, our fund that we have to help facilitate student mobility and field trips and activities and things outside, you know, our student population, whether international students and domestic students together, or things that they're doing in the schools, like McNair does a lot of activities like lion dance and things that are culturally specific, and include international students to participate at the school level as well. And these are some of the trips that some of our our student groups, local domestic students as well, some international students. Engaged in that photo is of a group went to New York. Other photos, I think it was a group from Canby, the Cheer Squad, did the, was it the World Championships? I forget exactly where. I think it was in Florida somewhere. So we're able to help facilitate that as well at the schools and for our students. There we go. So some successes and 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 what's new, again, some of this that I'm listing here is new is things that we continue to do. We have our own RIE scholarships, and our students that have come from our schools are able to continue their studies at public institutions in B C or across Canada. A lot of our schools also have their own awards for international students or recognitions for international students at their schools. That continues. Travel is an important part of what we do, and being in front and meeting parents and students in their communities. We work with our schools. So we do continue to travel to meet with students and parents and also with their schools. We work with our embassy staffs a lot through various events, whether it's trade missions and education fairs and forums, workshops and seminars, things like that. We visit with school districts and bureaus in various countries as well. I mentioned Nanchan as as one. And 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 the travel remains a very important part of what we're able to do. And and so often, the parents are happy to meet us, obviously. And then when their child comes to us, they see us here. And and it's it's a wonderful way to sort of build that connection. We continue to work on, of course, improving and continuing to work on efficiency. Some of it's the less exciting part of what we do, but the efficiencies as far as applications and database, and making sure we get information as quickly and easily and simply as we can, and be able to share it with the end users when they need it as quickly as possible as well. We have continued, as I mentioned, we leverage our virtual platforms to have orientation sessions, pre-departure, after they arrive, and also with parents that maybe, for for example, that can't, aren't here, we we use those platforms to continue our communication, newsletters, information sessions. We bring people in to talk and to to answer questions and and special events and engagement as much as we can. With our, one of the things that we've done was wonderful, a group of our students, domestic students from Boyd, created three videos with our international students together about what it's like to be in Richmond and in student interviews, and another one on, you know, when you get here, what to expect and things like that. And so the students at Boyd worked with our international students to create those videos. I do have the URLs. They're not listed yet. You won't be able to to search them online yet. They're not listed on Google, but they will be. And we'll pump them out, of course, through our socials for you to take a look at them. Please do, please share them. And obviously, the feedback from you is from everyone's is is welcomed as well. We also do surveys throughout the year, entry during the year, and I want students to leave our program to get feedback from the students and parents about their experience with us. And, you know, the case, the beefs, and things that we can work on and continue to improve on. We're working to continue to to work on on engagement and having our students feel like they belong and can make connections right away and 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 maintain those those connections. One of the things that we initiated, started last year, but we've initiated this year, is a mentorship program. So for our new students that come in, international students that come in, they're going to be connected. Right now, we have four schools on board. We want to make sure that we can do this right, and it's effective, to connect our internet, new incoming international students with students that are here, to show them ropes, so to speak, and show them around and engage with them for certainly that beginning part, the first term, or even up to the semester, to engage our students in that way. How to join a club, have someone to sit with to have lunch, for example, and things like that. So we also had last year a homework club at McNeil Secondary was was able to provide us a space where we brought some students in. It was, they could come to choose to come in and sit down and do their homework or talk or ask questions or engage with other students. So that was successful. And our Let's Learn English, so that picture is our parent group. We continue, we started that about three years ago, and and it's a way, again, for our parents to come and and make connections themselves. And and it's a lot of, and as I've mentioned, I think, maybe every time, there's always a wrap-up potluck. The last class of the of the session is a potluck, and it's not only a lot of fun, it's delicious. Everyone brings in something special and shares. It's a wonderful time. And you're welcome to come if you like as well. We continue with home stay. We keep with our our home stay support and also connecting with home stays in the community and adding home stays and and continuing to engage and prepare and support them as well as our students throughout the process. Again, most of our students do not stay in our home stay program, but they're in the community. And regardless if they're with our home stay or not, or they have us as a custodian or a private custodian, they're always included in our support. We, you know, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five wraparound care. And whether they're in a private home stay or with family members or whatnot, they still have access to our support, and they're included in all our communications and supports that we provide throughout the year. And so before I pass the mic to my co-presenter and bring this up, I would like to say, I do think last year, we talked about the challenges and and, you know, as I said, some of the challenges will continue next year, and there'll be new challenges that will undoubtedly present themselves. But overall, I I believe we had a successful year again in international education. We feel fortunate that we're able to help facilitate bringing the students and people together from all these different parts of the world, and bring them into our community, and to live and and to learn and to work and to to play side by side over an extended period of time. We, the success of our program is a direct reflection of all the the support and encouragement and guidance we receive from the board, senior team, all of our colleagues at, you know, H R and community education and communications and finance, of course, all of our educator colleagues at the school sites and administrators as well, works yard, our support staffs, and also the people in our community, you know, that are not in the school district, part of the school district, that interact with our students. It could be a sports club, you know, coach, or a community cultural club leader or something like that, or the all the interactions our students have in the community that help them feel welcomed and and supported in the district. So just on behalf of my colleagues, and you know, just wanted to thank everyone for that support and guidance and and encouragement. And we look forward to being able to continue to do so at your, at your will, at your decision to continue to do so moving forward into the school year and beyond. I am happy to ask, answer questions now. I wonder if it might, through the board, obviously, if we'd like to do it after the
Yeah.
my co-presenter?
Sure.
Yes. Okay, so I'll pass the mic over to my co-presenter.
Hi, everyone. My name is-
Hi, everyone. My name is Defne. I'm from Turkey. I came to Canada last year. In grade nine, I decided to study in a different country to improve my English. And it will also be a good opportunity for me to stay by myself, far away from my home. So I came kind of Canada in grade 10. Because I love chemistry so much, I took chemistry 11 in grade 10 and I achieved outstanding results in both chemistry 11 and math 10. At first, language was my biggest challenge at school, but like my teachers were really helpful and understanding. They tried to help me as much as they could. I enjoyed my last year. I want to complete like graduate from Richmond and I want to become a biochemical engineer or pilot. For extracurricular activities, I joined the air cadet program. And I'm also volunteer as a project manager for a project called DOS that connects people over the world to those who don't have opportunity to study abroad. Give like it's giving chance those people to speak English and learn about their peers' experience online. Yeah. That's all. Thank you.
All right, folks, do we have any questions for others? Rod, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, in your report, by the way, thank you very much for your effort, your hard work, you know, and especially the diversification plan here in your business plan. And my question is with regarding your comment here, the most relevant challenges faced as it pertains to international education is because of the federal government initiatives and policy changes. Would you mind explaining this policy changes in the immigration? What impact would that be in our new business plan? And what else can we do if there are some changes that we can advocate, you know, through our MPs and our federal government?
Thanks for the question. Yes, you know, and whatever the challenges are, regardless of what we take, always endeavor to take, you know, a measured, calm, thoughtful approach to what those challenges could be and what the impacts would be and how we can address them in a measured and thoughtful way. On the 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 immigration side, the biggest impacts have been since 2023, it was a large number of not just international students, but the post pandemic sort of bubble. It was a lot of, I think, about a million people entered Canada. So the federal government a couple of years ago put capacity numbers, so a limit on the number of temporary residents that can enter or and study at post secondary schools and in a way to manage is from their perspective, you know, accommodation and and access to education, things like that. So that is, and then in addition to that, so they're going to have a limit to the number of internationals that they're going to accept as to enter Canada to study as well as other temporary residents as well. And so that has had an impact on K to 12 as well. There is no capacity for K to 12 in Canada. There's actually room for growth there. There are targets, but they're not, they're not capacities. However, that still has an impact overall. It creates sort of again, some uncertainty. At the same time, immigration and citizenship IRCC then also so limited the number of applications that were going to be accepted and also approved. But also the staff also were downsized as well. And so just recently, last month, the IRCC did commit that they are going to speed up the processing, the actual time and process and dedicate especially for the K to 12 sector as well. So they've recognized that they have set that and they're working on doing undoing just that. So the biggest part of the impact has been on those capacities and and the number of applications that are accepted and processed to be approved. And has that that impact?
So if I could follow up, Mr. Chairman, is the change applicable to all countries? And is there any quota from countries which think there could be some shift and change of policies?
Thanks for the question. I'm not aware of any country specific capacities. It's overall about that. And in addition, of course, to those capacities, it's also the reflection of, you know, there's instability related to the economies, right? The we're talking about for ourselves and for other countries related to activities of other countries. For example, the U S, you know, the elephant in the room, so to speak, there that has impacted on us as well as other countries as well. That has added to uncertainty and sort of a lack of clarity for people. You know, that's had an impact on some parents are just going to, you know, wait, wait to see how this plays out, how this will go before they make a decision. So for K to 12 students, though, often parents are planning long term ahead of time. It's not sudden, one day they say, I'm going to send my my grade 10 student or child overseas to study. It's a long term plan and the importance of international education for us and for them remains. It's just in addition to these policies and issues, in addition to the economic instability, in addition to inflationary costs and availability of flights and the cost, all that cumulatively is is sort of come together and coalesce in this last year or so.
There anything we can
Oh.
up with our MP?
If you believe that, we're gonna kind of gonna cut you off because we have other questions here. Then we go to trustee Tablani.
Well, I think it's a wonderful report and it's always good to hear from you about international students are doing and and I think it's it's really great that you've managed to reengage with Shenzhen because I mean, they were one of our largest participants in our program before. So, you know, hopefully there'll be an uptick there to increase the program. And I just a question for your co presenter because I thought you did a great presentation and we're so glad that you're here and experiencing Canada. Just wondered, there was a trip to Yukon. Did you go to that one?
No, didn't.
Oh, too bad. Did you go on any of the you must you must have gone on some trips?
No, because I prefer to spend that time with my family.
Oh, okay.
That's why.
Doing chemistry and that. And then I just think that Yukon trip was one of them. How many kids went with you?
I can't remember exactly, but it's a small group. It's 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 a small, it's a small group. And they, the the site there, they're geared towards this. And so obviously, the night to go out to see the lights and other things like that. So I think it was, I think 11 or 12 of our students in that range were able to go. Yeah.
And then just, I can't, I was going to ask a question about graduates. Like, you know, the students that come and maybe stay for a couple of years or whatever and graduate. Do they usually stay here or do they and they, you know, like, do they end up going to Canadian universities then?
So yes, it's a mix. Most of our students do, based on what we can tell, whether it's here or elsewhere, go on to post secondary studies of some kind. I know the bit dated, but the the B C government data was about 30 to 35% of international students go transition into post secondary school here in B C and in other parts of Canada. So that does definitely happen. Yeah.
All right, then I have one more. I have one complaint, just a quick one. I noticed in the picture they were all wearing I love New York.
Yes.
It should have been I love Canada.
Yes, I agree. I agree. Point eight. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Wong, followed by trustee Yang and then trustee Larson.
Thank you, Jim. So my question is that interesting for the Shenzhen program. Is that the offshore I I away? So I saw that some is you will welcome back first group of student. Is that that the school A student or just like adult student?
Yeah, it'll be, so there's be a mix as we move forward of secondary middle school and elementary students. Basically, it's not going to be exactly the same as our Shenzhen program that took, you know, started in, I believe, 2004, thereabouts and evolved and grew over time. But yes, there'll be student groups coming to us to, yep. Yeah, Lunar New Year period as well as summer camp as well.
The other one is that the group is that the professional learning program for educator.
Yeah, so
Here or?
Both, so both. More recently, it's been here. So we, yes, we had a group from Jingdao, Shandong province that came to visit our school district. And we had a number of of our colleagues in our school district that were able to come and share experiences and meet with them and talk was wonderful. So we continue to do that. That's onshore largely, but we also do that offshore and hybrid now. Again, the the virtual platforms have helped us sort of enhance our ability to connect to one. So, yeah, that was, yeah, thanks for for bringing that up. Yes, we had a wonderful visit from educators from Shandong. Yes, thank you.
All right, trustee Yang, followed by trustee Larson, followed by trustee Sergeant.
Thanks very much, Chairperson. And as always, thank you, Director, for being here tonight. Remember, a year ago, you were here and the world is so much more different now over the course of the year. But, you know, our our purpose don't change. Does it not change in terms of our international education? So I want to thank you for the hard work and to your co presenter as well. And I do apologize I didn't get your name, but I did have a question for you, which is, you know, being from Turkey and just seeing the graph earlier, like, you know, maybe we have less Turkish students or just folks that may be from your area. Are you finding a good support network within school? And do you feel like you're well supported as an international student here in Richmond?
Yeah, like, they help us like all equally. So there's not like some difference like makes me different from other students. So I feel the support well, yeah, goodly.
Well, that's awesome. And I always, it always brings me joy when there's a raven in the room, McNeil students. So thank you very much for being here. And just a few comments on the update. I think, you know, as it, as has been noted earlier in this agenda item and the last one, the the policies from the federal government in terms of cliff diving on on immigration policy and IRCC practices, I think has really hurt the educational sector here as province throughout Canada. And, you know, there really is no buffer room, very little to none for for folks at our level and understanding that senior levels of government have to do what they have to do. Money's too tight for to mention, but, you know, I think this really warrants that further conversations are certainly our local representatives. M P Chakow and M P Parm Baines. But also, you know, we've written to our immigration minister on matters such as the link program and all, you know, programs that support newcomers and certainly international students as well. So I think we need to re up those efforts moving forward in this year. And I think, and certainly, I think our director has been doing this throughout the year as part of his work, but really just highlighting the quality of education here in Canada, in Richmond, and really appeal to folks in this village we call Earth that, you know, this is a destination of choice for North American style education. And understanding that there may be things on the other side of the 49th parallel that's going on. But for a good quality, North American life and culture for students to explore that, Canada is the place to be in Richmond is certainly a top candidate in Canada. You know, I'm super thrilled to see Wakayama coming back as well in strength because that's certainly a very strong sister city connection. And just speaking to my former sister city advisory committee members last night, they too are thrilled about having that global connection between Richmond and Wakayama back up again. And so very much looking forward to that. And I do have to echo trustee Tablani as well, you know. It's certainly great to see our students and our staff explore the world. Perhaps maybe a little more challenging now to get to the U S. But I'm sure we'll get to a point where we're comfortable that our our folks are going to be safe and well taken care of when we head south. So but those efforts nonetheless continue and want to thank you for for everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Larson, followed by trustee Sergeant, please.
Well, thank you. I have a special place in my heart for this program, of course, and I can't get over the the growth that the the program has taken. And I don't mean just in numbers or the numbers of countries, which I think is fantastic. But the things that you're doing with the students is because education is so much more than sitting in a classroom. And you're making that happen for these kids from other places in the world. And I think that is just amazing. And 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 I always think our students benefit, our the families benefit, the home stay parents benefit, the whole community benefits. Because I still know people that were my home stay families back in 2010 who still go back and forth and have the kids come back and forth. Some of them have children and they visit here. So what that's doing to an unstable world right now is very special. And that's gone on for as long as I, you know, like you say, for 10 years easily. And so thank you. It's it's just, it's, the program is rich and there's a lot of integrity there. And you can hear it. And I just want to speak to the young woman. You did a wonderful job presenting to us. And I must tell you, when I was working with Mr. Sefton 10 years ago, we had one student from Vietnam. And she loved it. She was, like you said, supported and enjoyed and learned and it was fantastic. And I love that you've been here and had a similar experience. That's wonderful. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Trustee Sergeant.
Yeah, thanks very much. I mean, you've got lots of thank yous, but I, you know, a real heartfelt thank you for in in such hard times. And I know you're being very positive, but there's been very challenging times in the world. And this year has seen so much more. And so I really wanted you to, wanted to applaud your presentation because you really wanted to present a real positive and vibrant program. And I think that's happening. And as I always say every year, this program isn't a money maker. This program is so that our students can travel there, students can travel and see us. And I think no more time, this time is so much more important to make sure that we keep learning about each other, learning about Turkey, learning about different countries and making those connections and doing that around young people so that we make the world a smaller place. And I just want to applaud you for keeping the center, keep that center on. We'll work about the other things by keeping the center and the focus on the young people. I really appreciate all the additional things, the field trips, the support, making it fun. And I just wanted to say, you know, thank you so much for coming. I don't think I could have done it. But you're you're really enriching the lives of our students too, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And then on the advocacy note, I would like to recommend that the board, we actually haven't met with our new MPs. And I would like to put forward, I'm not making a motion, but if we could coordinate a meeting. I do think there are a number of things we have to follow up on the the international program as well as our budget, our current budget and the ramifications that are happening. So if we could arrange a meeting with our two new MPs as soon as possible, I think that would be really beneficial. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming out tonight and joy to hearing about you and good luck in your education.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to new business. Before we do that, though, Assistant Lang, can you take questions again? So following item A, they, we're going to get questions from the public. If you have questions, please come up and get your name on the speaker's If you have questions, uh please come up and get your name on the speaker's list. Uh, Mr. Lang will be there to take your uh to take your name down. Um, moving on to I, back to item eight, uh new business, uh we have a motion and it was put forward by trustee Beliza. Trustee Beliza, do you want to talk to your motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Uh, what I'd like to talk first, the facts and the needs, then the motion, and then the uh rationale. The toxic drug crisis in B C claimed over two thousand five hundred lives in twenty twenty-four with fentanyl present in nearly nine out of ten cases. Youth are increasingly exposed to risk, including opioid contamination, vaping and early experimentation. And other data also include from January first, twenty nineteen to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, there were hundred twenty-six unregulated drug toxicity deaths of B C youth under nineteen. That's about twenty-five youth deaths per year. And in twenty twenty-two, unregulated drug deaths in Richmond were about twenty to twenty-eight people. And about twenty-six percent of youth in grade seven to twelve in B C report having vape, and many begin at age thirteen. You know, that's based on Fraser Health and the other one is a substance use health net network. And then B C is an ongoing public health emergency due to toxic drug supply. Richmond already faces real harm from toxic overdoses. And people die. Some are dying, and prevention is needed. Preventative and awareness programs and initiative could reduce this risk. Richmond, like many other lowland mainland communities, has seen rising concerns related to youth substance use and overdoses. Parents and schools are requesting for a stronger prevention support. So my friends, in view of this risk to our students' health and well-being, I'm respectfully moving for this motion. Whereas student well-being, safety and healthy development are fundamental priorities of the Board of Education's of School District Number Thirty. Whereas substance use risk, including opioids, vaping and other drugs, continue to be a growing concern in B C communities, impacting youth and families. Whereas early education, awareness and prevention programs have been shown to reduce risk-taking behaviors and improve student outcome. So my motion is be it resolved, that the Board of Education of School District Number Thirty-Eight, Richmond, direct staff to identify opportunities to expand district-wide substance use awareness and prevention initiatives, including education and healthy choices, prevention, parent and caregiver engagement, community partnership, and to report back to the board on the proposed next step. And the rationale behind this, please consider rationale as just a suggested uh for the board suggestion for the staff to consider this potential uh priorities. First, student safety and well-being. Addressing drugs and substance use risk aligns with the district commitment to creating safe, inclusive and supportive environment and equip students with both facts and strategies to stay safe in the face of the toxic drug crisis. Second, community need. Richmond, like many communities in B C, is affected by the toxic drug crisis. A coordinated awareness and prevention week shows leadership and responsiveness. Family and community engagement give parents and caregivers tools to support prevention at home and our community. Educational impact. Prevention efforts not only reduce risk behaviors, but also promote mental health. Focus and engagement in learning, student-led initiative will promote healthy choices, peer support and resiliency. Consistency and visibility. A district-wide week ensures all schools participate in awareness and prevention, creating equity and consistency across SD Thirty. Partnership opportunities. It strengthens collaborations with our partners and community groups that would include staff, parents and other community partners, which groups already active in the awareness and prevention work. Then alignment with provincial priorities. Support B C Health and Education Ministry's emphasis on early intervention, substance use awareness and student well-being. And the last one, balanced approach. It combines awareness with prevention, avoiding the stigma while it promoting responsibilities. And again, these are suggestions or areas for considerations. We are giving wide latitude and discretion to the staff for consideration for the betterment and health well-being of the students. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, um, absolutely. Thank you for making the motion. I'm looking for a seconders. It's been moved by, motion moved by trustee Beliza, looking for a seconder, second by trustee Wong. Thank you. Okay, uh, so we now enter debate. Um, although before we do that, can I just ask uh Superintendent Yu C? Uh, in terms of the measures that uh that we are currently doing, can you, are you able to sort of give us a summary so that we know uh we have something to sort of compare against?
Well, thank uh thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and um I'm gonna invite Assistant Superintendent Brodigan to uh speak to uh some of the work uh that is currently underway within the district and how we support, uh provide uh substance use awareness uh to our students. Please.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Superintendent Yu C. Um, so just a brief high-level summary of some of the things that happen uh in the school district to support staff, uh students and families with uh substance awareness and uh prevention. So making healthy choices, including around substance abuse uh education and prevention, is part of the B C curriculum in physical and health education from kindergarten to grade twelve um and is supported by the Ministry of Education document called Supporting Student Health. Um, and because the uh this is grounded in curriculum, it helps provide a proactive approach which focuses on education about substance use, starting in the elementary grades through to secondary. Also, uh, the ministry has recently refreshed the Erase website, which is now linked on every school website, providing uh resources and information for students, families and school staff with respect to substance abuse as well as many other topics related to safe and inclusive schools. Um, and schools will be fully briefed on these new additions to the Erase website um at their staff meetings on the first Monday in November. We also have the Ministry Pilot uh I C Y, Integrated Child and Youth Teams, who work with an integrated model of care with community partners such as Vancouver Coastal Health, Richmond. Um, and their core mandate. Coastal Health, Foundry Richmond, Richmond Addiction Services, B C Children's Hospital and the Pathways Clubhouse. The DARE program, Drug Abuse Resistance Education continues to be available in our elementary schools uh for grades four through six. Um, and it's offered in our schools every other year, and this year there are fifteen of our elementary schools participating in the DARE program. And we also have a new position this year, Teacher Consultant for Physical and Health Education. And one of their uh responsibilities includes supporting teaching staff with the implementation and delivery of all aspects of the P H E curriculum, which includes uh areas of consent education, substance abuse abuse and healthy decision-making. So that's just a brief overview of some of the initiatives in the district. Thank you.
Yes, here. Trustee Tablotny, followed by trustee Sargent.
To the motion, and I'm gonna, if you can bear mess with me, I'll I'll um put this amendment out. But I need to hand out the yes questions first.
Uh, amendments.
I have questions I would like to ask.
Following the amendment.
Sure.
Yes.
I would like to ask questions about the current motion on the floor.
Okay, but if it's given amended, then.
Well, I would like to ask the questions so that the mover is aware of the questions I have around this motion and others, so that maybe we can impact the decision of the motions.
Let's see if it gets seconded. And if it does, then we'll.
I don't have questions of this motion as of yet. I haven't seen it, but I have questions on this motion.
Okay, but as said.
I think we should, you know, finish with questions. And then if I also have, uh, I have a deferral motion as well, but I thought we were doing questions first.
What do you think?
I don't want to just jump off this current motion. I have clarity questions that.
Okay, this is.
Isn't that what we said?
Okay, I'll see this is sensitive motion. Let's so let's make sure we cover bases. So um let's take questions on the initial motion. And then once the questions are taken, then trustee Tablotny, you will get first crack again to to do your amendment if you choose to do so. All right?
Okay, somehow I've got the wrong.
So let's start here and uh and take themes. Uh trustee Sargent.
Thank you. Yeah, uh, I had uh questions on the motion. I'm not clear on the motion. Um, and it it concerns me a fair amount that this motion is is stating the fact that nothing is happening. And I'm I'm really, um, this has been an issue and a concern for our community for a few years. And in fact, um, it has been worked on by uh top health authorities, uh the Ministry of Education. As the superintendent has says, we have a new Erase strategy. There are many partners working on this. So this motion comes across like this is something new for our community, and in fact, it is not new. And it is so very important uh that there have been intense work on this issue. Um, I'm I, so I'm unclear where this ask came from. And the question, the first question I have is, are you aware of the current um strategies that the district is using? Um, and are you aware uh the current strategies the ministry has put forward in this very serious issue? And how would uh having a camp. Clear of what a campaign would look like. Very serious issue and has been for quite a long time, and that there are key people caring, intelligent people that have been working on this, and our staff every day in our schools work on this. Um, it's not something new that it's the flavor of the month and that we should have a campaign about it. I take great offense by this motion. And so the questions I have for you are, are you aware of what the district is currently doing? And are you aware of what the ministry is doing? And is that reflected in your motion? And I have other questions, but I'll wait my turn after that. Thank you.
Uh trustee Beliza, you'd like to respond to her question?
Sure, you want me to? Okay. Well, counterpoint is, it's already embedded in our curriculum, their program, Integrated Child and Youth Program, R I C. Yes, the answer to your question is yes. We do have information about those. But the reality is, they are not enough. The fact that naloxone and automated external defibrillator, A E D, are newly included in the Ministry of Education guidelines. It is an implied acknowledgement of drug problems and toxicities and what it means that curriculum and programs are not enough. We want more solution to the problem. Either we are part of the solution or part of the problem.
Right. Uh trustee Yang, followed by trustee Blotny. This is regarding questions about the motion.
Thank you, uh Chairperson. Just uh, yeah, questions at this time from me. Um, and uh I want to thank uh trustee Beliza for putting this forward. Just a question around um uh a particular section of this motion you're presenting, uh quote, uh prevention initiatives, including education and healthy choices, prevention, parent and caregiver engagement, community partnership, um, end quote. And I just want to s- uh, the reason why I quote um this section of the the motion is, um, you know, these are some of the, this is the essence of, uh, I believe, what we're trying to achieve through the uh physical health, uh, physical and health education curriculum K to twelve. Um, and so my question to you is, um, I'm wondering if you've read um the curriculum um for physical health and education, um, and uh whether you're aware that prevention efforts are uh key to this? And um just a curiosity, why that wasn't included in uh in in the text of this motion?
Hey, thank you.
Yes, trustee Beliza.
Good question. We are, we are always hearing, it takes a village to raise a kid, and our focus is on the learner. We know there are many programs, as I mentioned, in our curriculum, their program, Integrated Child and Youth Program. But the fact is, we still have a crisis facing our kids. And what does it tell you? What does it tell us? That our current system is not enough to meet the challenges of today. We need to do something. And uh we want a village. As we try to take pride of our collaborations and community partners in trying to help us, you know, of our, of the challenges that we face as a district. And uh to answer your question with the guard to the authority or ways we can try to solicit support from our communities that under School Act sixteen eighty-five, power and capacity for the purpose of carrying out its powers, functions and duties under the School Act. A board has the power and the capacity to determine local policies for effective and efficient operations of school in the school district. I think our assistant superintendent would attest to that kind of powers under the School Act. So what it means is, if we have the will to really focus on the solutions, we can find ways and means, as a society, as a community, to join together. We can have a forum. We always have forum for students, like for teachers, attended by teachers, attended by students, recti, trustee, we can have, in a simplistic way, we can have a forum attended by students, by parents, by our staff, and try to discuss what is good for the students and for our children. I think, I hope that answered your question with regard to the kind of educational programs that we have. My, my answer would be, look at the statistics. Is it growing or is it isn't? Look at the depth. Did, did that, did you, I have cited statistics. It means it's getting like a crisis. Something has to be done. Something has to be, I think, added in our programs and system, making sure that we address the crisis. And to deny the input of our staff is denying their wisdom.
Trustee Belisa.
Yes.
I want to go, but you have more questions, so.
Okay.
Trustee de Blotney.
Well, yeah.
Followed by trustee Larson, followed by trustee Wong.
I have a few things to say, but first, you know, when you opened up, you quoted two thousand twenty-two, that there were twenty-eight people in Richmond. I don't know if the people here know this, but one of those twenty-eight people was my son. So no one knows any more than I do about what is needed in this community and, 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 you know, in this regard. We need, we need to throw everything that we can at it, especially education is extremely important. So trustee Belisa, are you aware that the physical health and education, the new first aid requirement currently does not include training for our students to use naloxone? And that could save a life of a friend if they are carrying it. It's very simple now, nasal naloxone is very simple to administer. And actually, we should be carrying more than one kit of nasal naloxone. So I'm wondering, were you aware of that? Because you're talking like, you know, this, this is going to change the world, but when I could, I confirmed that with Minister Bear in our meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I believe you were in the same meeting, and I asked her if that program included that, and she said, no, not at this time.
It is.
Okay, so that's, that's my one question. And then my other question is, when did the light bulb go on? Because what changed your mind on this crisis? Because a year ago, a little more than a year ago, I wanted you and, and all my fellow trustees to support a motion to put naloxone and A E Ds in all schools for the safety of our students and our staff and anyone that is on the school grounds. And you voted against that. So I'm, I'm glad you've seen the light, trustee Belisa, I really am. But I think that one week, having a forum, those things are not going to do it. This needs to be embedded in the physical health education program in secondary schools. And elementary schools, yes. All kinds of evidence. It needs to be reinforced in secondary school, and that is what my amendment is going to be.
Okay.
Okay.
Trustees, before we go any further, when you do your, when it's your turn, can you ask one question at a time, and so we can allow trustee Belisa to respond to it? And can we also keep, I mean, we can take more turns, but if we could keep the number of questions, about two or three questions, we can always come back to you again. So trustee Belisa, if you want to respond to trustee de Blotney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for that question. Let's go back in terms of the context of what you're saying. I'm glad that you also for, for, I guess, see what the decision of the ministry is coming. At the time when you presented the motion, there was no guidelines from the ministry. And in that case, because I believe we are in a human society, humane, we have to consider the prevention and the awareness aspect on the belief of the saying that ounce of prevention is worth, an ounce of prevention is, is worth a pound of cure. So because there was no guideline from the ministry, I feel, I feel that we should spend more on the awareness program and the prevention initiative than spending two hundred fifty thousand for that regard. Now, I'm glad that the ministry has included I, in my rationale, that, you know, we should consider this particular aspect. Now, with regard, with regard to the point of having naloxone, it's, it's a forgotten issue. It's part of the guideline now, but I still believe that Canada as a humane society, we should consider all angles from awareness, prevention, and treatment, if we can, because our focus is on the learner and the life of the learners. So I think, you know, we, we vote in this chamber, we vote what we believe in. And to me, at the time, there was no guideline from the ministry, so we just respect whatever decision by the board. But now it has changed, and I would like to advocate that we should consider all angles in terms of trying to be mindful of the lives of, and of everybody, students and individuals.
Believe that we're gonna, can we move on to the next one? Okay. Trustee Larson.
My, my, I just have a quick comment with regards to the naloxone and the A E Ds that was mentioned earlier. I, I think it's very important, we don't mix that up. That's, that's for how we react to a situation, obviously, that from a, an overdose and, and drugs, drug use. So it's, it's just like putting smoke detectors in homes. It doesn't mean that what, what the prevention is doing isn't working, it just means fires still happen. But the other piece too, I, I want to thank Assistant Superintendent Rodigam to, for, for giving us that detailed information about what we are doing, and that is continuous. This, that's more than it was probably last year and the year before, and the year before, and will continue on. So again, I think with, with this motion, we're already doing these things. So I'm, I'm, I'm a bit confused where it's come from, so those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Larson. Trustee Wong.
So I, as a trustee here, I really support that the substance use awareness and the prevention. There's a week, so we, I know that I have, I cop as a rec cops from the B C Connors report over between twenty fourteen to twenty twenty-four, reported over two hundred and five ages, zero to eighteen, who have technically, technically lost their life due to, to the substance use. So we now is a concern about now, the busy current substance use challenge. They now is that really focus is, is that vaping and cannabis, ventilized risk. We need to focus on, I know, now is the B C curriculum has not sufficient human pace with this involving public challenges. Or if we, this, this, if we, our district, we have this week, the purpose, we can support student well-being by promoting knowledge, health choices, and community awareness about substance use prevention. I, I think prevention is really important. And now you say that we have a Richmond addiction, that addiction society is that refer from the social worker, is, is, is the late. Prevention is the very important thing in, in chest. And you know, if this, we, this substance use awareness and prevention week, our district can just like hold this one, so many family and at home and parents, community organization, we can group together to just like get awareness to everyone in the community. And you say that our, about, is a concern about the budget. If the teacher engaged in the classroom, does the teacher, student discuss lesson or activity during their regular instruction time? I don't think is that a concern about the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, folks, what we are going to do is go through a second round of questions again. You don't, if you don't have a question, that's fine, but we're going to go through a second round of questions. And then trustee de Blotney, you wanted to make an amendment. So let's do another round of questions, because I've noticed trustee sergeant hands up. And once we do the round of questions, then trustee de Blotney will go back to you. All right, trustee sergeant, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I just want to, I guess, talk to the staff and the community workers that are working so hard every day with our youth, and there's absolutely no recognition of that tonight. And it makes me incredibly sad, and I just want to say to you, thank you for working every day, talking to youth, helping youth, all of the, these magical programs and these magical people are already doing the work. I am, I, I, with all due respect, trustee Belisa, where have you been? Because we've been working on this. We were at B C S T A, working on the vaping. We went to the federal government, there were changes made in regards to vaping. This is not new. You are not solving anything new. And I would really, I, there is no way I could support a motion like this that is suggesting that some magical week, and I'm sorry, I'm very passionate about this, because these are students' lives we're talking about, and you're talking about organizing a week where we all run around the streets or do whatever, I'm not even sure. Where have you been, trustee Belisa? These, these important discussions have been happening. You are on the board. When you say, does the board have the will? Pardon me. Of course we have the will, we've been doing it, and we're going to deny staff? And I'm sorry, I'm getting passionate, but the comments you're making are not respectful. Deny, we're going to deny staff if we don't pass this motion to work on this issue, it's already happening. And so my question is, what do you think will happen in a week? Do you, in a certain week, which our superintendent has already given information that that cannot happen, because we have something called the collective agreement? And you know that, and you're still putting forward some fancy week? I, I, I don't understand, and the question is, what do you think you will accomplish by organizing some fancy week? And, and, and to do what?
Uh, trustee Belisa?
With, with all due respect to sergeant, that the trustee sergeant, I don't know if you're listening with what I'm saying here. I already mentioned, it's already embedded. How clear would that be? Embedded in our curriculum, DARE program, Integrated Child Youth Program. But the question is, the crisis still continues. There, there is, there is an acknowledgement of those programs. The question is, are they enough? Because the crisis still continue posing a serious problem in our society, in our children's lives, you know? So that's why we are, this motion, we are referring to the staff. Is there other more potential initiatives that could help address the problem we are, we're facing now? So unless you'll tell me that there is no more, then arrest my case. But I still believe on the wisdom of the staff, especially the executive staff, if they can find some kind of solution where we, as a community, with the leadership of the board, we can have a forum. Now, you're talking of weeks and days, what can we do that we haven't done? The first thing that we haven't done is group ourselves as a community, as a district. Is there any program that we have as a district? None. Too sure to say about that. There is some kind of the, you know, curriculum, we have the DARE program, the I C, now the, the ministers, but we don't have a collective district.
We can do more, but you can't say we don't have it.
No, no, I'm.
Can we let trustee Belisa finish, please?
And what I'm saying, we have, but that might not be enough. That's what I'm saying. So please. So what I'm, what I'm trying to, in this motion, is just trying to have an input from the, our executive staff. Is, is there something that we can do? Something that they can probably help provide some kind of recommendations? That's what I'm saying.
Okay. As I said, this is sort of our second round of questioning, and trustee sergeant has spoken. I'm just looking around the table. Trustee Larson, your hand up, or you thinking about it? All right, trustee Yang, you were having a bit of discussion, now's the good, if you have a question.
No questions, just a comment. I think, I think it is quite misleading for trustee Belisa to suggest earlier that there's no program that exists to address this issue. I think the assistant superintendent just outlined, is there room to do more? Absolutely, there's room to do more. We're in a crisis, and by the way, not a single word, I haven't had, heard a single word from the proponents of this motion that goes out to the families that have been affected by this crisis. Not a single word of empathy. And I just wanted to take this moment to say to those who've been affected, we see you, we want to do better, and we must find a way to, to do better, to, to address this situation. It breaks, it should break everybody's heart that the fact that we're still in this crisis seven, eight, nine years into. seven, eight, nine years into, uh, when it first was declared by the province. But to suggest that nothing has happened, what trustee Belisa just said is, uh, simply misleading.
Okay, so.
Can I address that one, Mr. Chairman?
You wanna address his comments?
Okay.
Uh, this is the last one. And then we have, we've done all the questions on this motion. And then we're gonna move over to trustee Tablotny. So yes, trustee Belisa, go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to acknowledge and thank trustee Tablotny for, uh, you know, trying to have some kind of amendment. And to address trustee Yang, I think I have read uh, comments with regard to acknowledgement of the programs. And I'll repeat again, for the second time, that, uh, it's already, I acknowledged, it's already embedded in our curriculum. Their program, an integrated IC youth program. It's not a question of acknowledgement. It's a question whether they are enough to meet the challenges of this crisis. And to say that I don't have the empathy is not correct. If there's anything on this board who raised this question with regard to drug substance abuse and toxicity and drug overdose, I'm the only one suggesting tonight. So that, that is an example to show and prove that I empathize. Have you done that?
Sure.
So to say that I don't have empathy, with all due respect to you, Mr. Yang, the reason why I'm having this motion is to
clarity.
Underla, underscore that empathy.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we're now gonna move forward.
There's something said that no one on this board has been working on the drug uh, education. Are, are you, that cannot be left said. Uh, is that what you're saying? That, uh, no one in this board, except for you, have been working on drug education prevention? Are you? I've been on the board for twenty-five years. I can list how long. Have you been at the provincial table?
Have you, have you passed any motion?
Point of order, chairperson. Point of order, point of order, point of order.
Your point of order is?
Thank you very much, chairperson. Um, I, 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 I have to say, I have to agree with trustee sergeant. I think, uh, that comment, the two comments misleading by trustee Belisa, the fa, uh, the first one being when he said that, uh, this district's not doing, there's no programs uh, in the district that addresses this issue, simply false.
Okay.
And, and the other issue of accusing, uh, trustees of not, not doing work. Uh, I think he needs to withdraw those comments and apologize.
Okay, folks, first off, in terms of, no, uh, no, cuz I'm gonna speak now. There's a point of order. There has to be reason, like, why is there a point of order? The fact that you don't agree with what he said or whatever, people are allowed to have their opinions. All right, so we could be here all night going back and forth, and, and I'm sure it's entertaining for the people out there, but we need to move on. So we've had discussion about the initial motion. Now, back before trustee Tablotny wanted to make amendment and us, and trustee sergeant had asked if we could talk about the motion. So we've now done that. So we're going back to the, uh, trustee Tablotny. Uh, you start to make an amendment. Are you still interested in making amendment or? All right, can you make the amendment or read your amendment?
Okay. Uh, be it resolved that the Board of Education of School District Thirty-Eight Richmond direct staff to identify opportunities to expand district-wide substance use awareness programs as part of the elementary and secondary school physical health and education curriculum and report back to the board on proposed next steps by March two thousand and twenty-six. And further that, staff examine existing and new partnerships with community organizations, including Vancouver Coastal Health, Foundry, Richmond Addiction Services Society, and Dare B C, uh, among others. So what this, um, I, well, no, I won't say anything until it gets seconded.
Okay, so the amendment has been made public. Uh, I'm looking for a seconder. Oh, yeah. Trustee Larson seconds it. Thank you very much. All right, so now I will ask the writer to.
Point of order, actually, uh, chairperson.
Yes.
Point of order. Um, so given that, um, given that this amendment, um, involves language talking about, uh, community organizations, including Vancouver Coastal Health, Foundry, Richmond Addiction Services, and Dare B C, um, uh, conduct, uh, specifically item number eight, which is that trustees will refrain from discussing, voting, and influencing decision-making on any matter in which they are in conflict. Trustees shall declare any peculiar avoid any situation where there's decision-making or actions could reasonably be seen as being influenced by personal interests, business relationships, or the interests of friends, family, or associates. And, um, I do have, a chairperson, I do have information, uh, which, um, uh, suggests that trustee Alice Wong, uh, is a serving member of Dare B C, uh, uh, and is part of their Board of Directors. And so I wonder if trustee Wong will take this opportunity to recuse herself from the discussions. As per, as per our, um, as per our trustee code of conduct.
She should be asked.
Okay. So questions have been asked.
Really want to respond, uh, trustee?
Well, it's, it's a simple yes or no, whether you're gonna recuse.
The conflict interest. What's the mean? If the, if the day program is including in our curriculum here, in, in our school district, is, is a teaching in, in a district of student, why does their program is the conflict interest? Wait, what is that?
Okay, the reason for the conflict of interest is in her motion, it refers back to the Dare program. And so it's been written out here, it's, it's in the amendment. And, uh, uh, you are a board member of.
Some, some other, another motion is another motion. Why you said relate that all?
Because we're, this is the amendment, and the amendment includes language on, uh, community partnerships. So it's, it's a simple yes or no, whether you're gonna.
The pilots can't say anything, is that?
Mm-hmm.
So.
So the, 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 the trustee asked, I should want to correct. Are there, um, changes? It was a yes. He's a peculiar, you know?
All right. According to um, there, uh, the Dare program board member on it. So there is a, a conflict of interest. So, um, uh, you will not be able to, to vote on this, on the amendment. The goal, if the amendment is defeated, and we go back to the original motion, you're back in the game again. All right?
Yep.
Okay. Oh. I guess so too. So it's a conflict. Uh, we have to ask you to sort of leave the room and go in the other room while we finish this, uh, this session. All right?
Just, just to finish this, uh, motion, right? The second motion, right?
Yeah, just the second one. All right?
What, what, I, I don't know what's going on. I didn't have any money, money concern, anything? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, we don't take, um, questions from the audience at this moment, so. Not, when it's question period, you will have a voice.
Okay.
Okay? All right.
Good question on the motion.
Uh, hang on, let me, my, what's on second?
Do my amendment?
Do the amendment. I have a question.
I can speak to it for.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So can you?
They moved in second.
They moved to second, and so you have an opportunity to speak to it.
And so, um, my main goal in this is, you know, I don't want to see this, um, trustee Belisa's motion, um, uh, voted down. I don't wanna see it, you know? Uh, I, I think, you know, the spirit of what trustee Belisa is trying to do is good. And, but I, I think it needs to be a little clearer. And, and I really think that, that what's important is that we are doing things within our physical health and education program. And it could possibly be expanded. And we should be working with our other uh, community partners. And there are other organizations out there that can also assist us with, um, with these, uh, with, with, um, their expertise. And some of them are peer-led, uh, you know, for young people. So they don't have a, you know, an adult finger waving, or wagging at them. Um, kids really, uh, open up to, um, those kind of experiences. So, uh, that's why I'm putting forward this, this amendment. The curriculum that, uh, the B C Ministry of Health, or Ministry of Education has put forward and expand these opportunities, which is currently happening now. And I can tell you that Richmond Addiction Services, uh, has, um, has presented to every high school in the district and last year. And they, you know, their touch points, uh, was over. Last year, they had over seventy presentations and over four thousand individual contacts. So that, that's happening in our district now. Okay? We, that can be expanded. These programs, we, if we work with our community partners, we can do that. Um, you know, I don't think we wanna put any extra pressures on our staff. I think that this can be done uh, in good time. It's not, doesn't have to be done until March, uh, twenty twenty-six. And I think our staff are always looking for ways to expand, uh, opportunities for our young people. This is not asking for the moon and stars. It's just asking for a reasonable, um, you know, reasonable, uh, expansion, uh, possible expansion of programs. So um, that's, that's my amendment to make sure that this, you know, this, uh, initiative doesn't go away. And as far as a forum or a week, it's possible. But I don't want to put that as a, you know, I don't wanna mandate that in a motion or anything. So I'm just making this clear.
Uh, we have questions regarding the amendment. Uh, trustee sergeant, followed by trustee Yang, go ahead.
Just clarity, uh, two areas where I have a bit of concern is, um, we're gonna ask our staff to identify opportunities to expand district-wide awareness programs. Uh, I would like, you know, the superintendent, we can't just go, okay, we wanna have a whole bunch of programs. We are going into a very, very difficult budget process. So I would, uh, wanna ask what that would mean for staff if they read that. And then the, and further that, staff examine existing? I, I don't know what examine, like, these are all incredible partners, right? So are we examining? Uh, I don't know if that's the right word. Um, like, build on or celebrate or examine means a bit of like, what are you actually doing? What, so I'm wondering if you would think of a, a different word. And then these, the way it's written, it sounds like these are new partnerships. So I'm just thinking if there's a way for you to take the examine word out. And, um, they're not new partnerships, so that might be confusing for our. Oh, just clarity.
So there's suggestions.
So, uh, could I ask the superintendent for, if he read this, if this were to pass, what does expand district-wide awareness programs mean to him?
Hey. Trustee.
Uh, through the, through the chair, uh, thank you, uh, trustee sergeant. Uh, again, depending on the motion that is passed by the board, staff will, uh, staff will, uh, look, uh, look at the actions that are, that are implicit in the motion. The clarity of this motion uh, takes it, makes it clear, uh, unlike the previous motion that require, that talks about uh, school staffs engaged in activities that may be beyond the purview. Uh, this motion is, is direct, well, if, if passed, it's asking staff to look at what are our, our current programs and current, not just only the curriculum, but some of the, uh, some of the existing partnerships, and also the resources that are available through E-Race. And, um, and there are a number of, uh, those partnerships listed here. Uh, we are the table ongoing with, uh, Vancouver Coastal Health and the City of Richmond in terms of their wellness strategy. So to the point that trustees have made tonight, uh, this, this walk is already ongoing. Um, if passed, uh, staff will be bringing a report back to the board at the appropriate time, March twenty twenty-six, outlining what, the work that is already happening, that is embedded, certainly integrated with, embedded within the curriculum. But also, um, in the spirit of the motion, to see if there are additional things that are, that are in place, either through V C H or the work we're doing with, uh, the City of Richmond around their strategy, their wellness strategy, and, um, and, and bring that forward. So that's my interpretation of this motion. If passed by the board, uh, it is very clear. Uh, it's really asking staff to, uh, to bring forward, uh, what, what's already happening, and if there's, uh, there's space for us to continue the partnerships that are in place.
Thank you.
I hope that's helpful.
Thank you very much. And I wonder if, if the, if the mover would think of a, a friendly amendment around the work.
Well, if you have a suggestion, that's fine, or other trustees, but I, you know, we could say staff could review the existing and new partnerships.
Sure.
That's fine by me, too.
And then just.
Not saying get rid of them. They're good partnerships.
No, uh, review and, you know.
Okay.
Celebrate, whatever, review existing, um, existing partnerships and look for new.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it is.
Uh, trustee Yang.
Would you see that as a friendly amendment? Then I would move a friendly amendment, so.
You're gonna change it on your, will you read it out again? Thank you.
I think Tiffany's probably got that, don't you? Yeah.
Trustee Yang, followed by trustee, uh, Larson, followed by trustee Belisa.
Thank you very much, chairperson. Um, I will support this amendment, um, and, and I'll, I'll, I'll kinda explain the reasons why. I think all of us here around the table, we want to void, um, we want students to avoid, uh, going down the path of substance use. And we all wanna do something about it uh, to, to alleviate, um, what is, uh, becoming a more painful crisis day by day. And, um, uh, I think it's really, really important as part of this, the language of this motion, that we ask staff to do some homework first before we presuppose any kind of solution. Uh, and so I think that work is paramount to any board direction that we give to our staff. Um, I, I really like the insertion, uh, uh, around the physical and health education curriculum and focusing on that, because that's paramount to the work that we're doing to prevent um, uh, the situation. Uh, and there is certainly more to do, uh, to strengthen curriculum as, um, staff has outlined. There's a new teacher consultant that's specific to this portfolio, uh, uh, beginning this school year. And we're super thrilled by that. But more solution has to come um, through the curriculum. And we're not going to be chasing gas station sushi solutions here. I wanna caution, but I, I, I just want to offer a word of caution when we engage in this conversation, because this issue is not for retail politics. Uh, not in any forum, certainly not. certainly not on a board of education where students matter so much to us. Uh, and their safety is really not political pawn. I hear that we were talking about the fact that our focus is on the life of learners, uh, the mind, and, and that we should be mindful of li- lives of the learner. Well, I, that, with all due respect, I think that, uh, that line of thinking would have helped when, uh, some trustees voted against putting, uh, life-saving A E Ds in our, uh, schools. We're not mega Republicans around here. Like, whatever we do has to be evidence-based. Uh, it has to be based on facts. It has to be based on, uh, input from expertise. The curriculum ha- curriculum matters, um, is on, in the hands of educators, and they know best through their training, and it's rigorous. They go through years and years of training and practice in their professional, uh, uh, journey. And so we ought to entrust them in the work they do, as we do with everything we do, uh, when it comes across the board table here. Uh, quite frankly, that's, that's who should be doing the work and not partisan activists. So I think the, the, the amendment is sound. I support it because it's grounded back to, um, what is, uh, what is needed, which is that professional lens, uh, from our staff. Thank you very much.
Okay. So I didn't want to interrupt you because, I mean, you're doing, sort of giving opinion and, and reason why. Um, as I said earlier, this is one, one last chance for questions. So does anyone have any more questions, uh, for trustee de Blotney regarding her amendment?
Good. Have a final speak to this?
Yeah, you will, yeah.
There it is.
Uh, Heather, did you have a question? You want, so you want to make a comment later on? Alright. Anyone else have any questions? Uh, trustee Beliza, you have a question? If you can, if it's just an opinion, we'll do that next. But if you have a question.
Now, the, the amendment to the main motion limits as part of the elementary and secondary school physical health education. Would there be other programs not included in this one that would clip the, uh, input of our staff with regard to identifying opportunities to expand district-wide substance use? What, what, what I'm trying to suggest, I guess, we, we should, we should give more discretion and latitude, wide latitude to our staff in trying to identify opportunities.
I think that's what the motion is asking, what the, the amendment is asking for. So to your question, yes, that's what the amendment is asking for.
Because under the physical health education and education, uh, partnership with parents are not included in that. And, and the, the main motion, I guess, is, uh, very clear on that one.
I would have to respond.
Yeah, you asked a question.
You know, as far as parents go, um, you know, they're not going to be in the classroom with the physical health and education program. This is something that's happening within the schools, within the classrooms. And so parents wouldn't be there anyway. If we want parent education, we have the Richmond District Parents Association here. They're the ones that could do that in partnership with us or any one, other one of these organizations to bring out. So that can be done. But our mandate is, if the school district is to teach the, the young people, our students. So I'm very clear on that one. I can answer that one quite easily.
Okay.
Okay.
Superintendent, sorry, did you finish answering your question?
It's okay.
Then you see.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, just to be clear, um, there are current, there are currently resources and tools that are available through the ERAS website for, for parents, so for students, staff, parents, and, and so on. So this, this motion will accomplish what you've indicated, uh, trustee Beliza as well. When staff takes this away and reports back to the board, it's looking at, uh, the, uh, the complete menu of opportunities that are available, not only with, that we are currently doing in the district, which is a lot, and you heard from the assistant superintendent, but if there are opportunities to, uh, that there are resources that, that parents could access, if we, as part of this exercise, find out that V C H, for example, Vancouver Coastal Health has some things, uh, that may be down the, the pipe line or the ERAS website that is, that is updated. And I, I will encourage parents and the folks who are present tonight, if you've not, if you've not actually visited the ERAS website, to do check it because there are resources there for families. So while it is true that a curriculum speaks specifically, uh, to students and, and, you know, uh, certainly in the K twelve physical and health education curriculum, uh, the, uh, there is definitely resources that are available there for families.
Thank you.
Alright, so, um, now, we, we're going to do is, I, I told people before, this was questions, and now if you have a, if you have an opinion you want to state, now's the time, do it. And, uh, trustee de Blotney, you'll be the last person to, you'll have the final word in terms of, do you have anything else you want to say? Now, it's voluntary unless you said all you need to say, or you have an opinion, you want to share still. Uh, trustee Beliza, followed by trustee Sargent, followed by trustee Larson.
The reference, Mr. Chairman, of being part of the MAGA, uh, I guess movement doesn't exist in Canada, nor we exist in ours.
You can hear that.
So the reference is something, uh, that is unnecessary and not respectful. And, uh, this particular amendment, I just have a reservation, but I have to acknowledge that thi- this is something that we need, you know, in terms of awareness and prevention. But I would probably venture to say that we need more. Partnership with parents, with teachers, if, I, I don't know if it is included in the new partnership with community organization. Would that include parents? Would that include teachers? I'd like to know. From the proponent of the, uh.
No, we're just doing your, your, your comments and opinions or thing. We've done all the questions. So just want to hear, you know, if you have any sort of final thoughts.
Very important, uh, Mr. Chairman, to, i- in my vote, uh, clarifications, very important in, in that regard.
Yeah, well, you have to base on what we've talked about so far because question period is over, you know? I don't know if he's finished yet. Trustee Beliza, you finished?
I'm not because just the definition of the, the wording is very important, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, well, we just had the opportunity to ask a question. No one put their hands. That's why we moved on to the opinion, so. Okay, so, you know, you've stated your opinion?
I guess.
Okay.
That's all what I'd like to ask. But if you don't acknowledge that, it's okay.
Uh, trustee Sargent.
Yeah, thanks very much with that friendly amendment, um, being okayed by the mover. I support the motion. Um, I think what we all have to remember is this work is happening intensely. Lives are being saved. Are we there yet? No, we have to keep working, but we have to build on the partnerships we have right now. We can't be saying nothing's happening. We don't know what's going on. No lives are being saved. Those people are in the trenches, working day and night. And so I support this motion because it acknowledges, um, that there's a ton happening. Let's see if there's a way that staff, not us, not the community, can look for ways that are going to be better with our health officers, with the health, um, the people that work in this directly. Richmond Addiction Services has been supporting this community for many years. And as far as parents, it was like at the R D P A meeting last night where I stood up and spoke, parents have direct connection to curriculum. And parents are, their baby is, they're the number one advocate for their baby. They can talk to their teacher, they can talk to their principal. This is what we're all built on, is that triad, that parents, teachers are. I'm just acknowledging Liz and the intense work that they do, but teachers are working on this every day. And so to say, oh, will teachers be involved? I, I don't understand. It's, it's kind of like there's deaf ears here, and I, I'm trying to stay on, on a focus of this is just trying to get better. But parents have an incredible role. Parents need to teach themselves. That's why the ministry created an ERAS website link so that parents can go on there and learn because it's not only up to the school. I hope all the parents in the audience tonight are taking as much ownership as everybody else is. And you can go on the website and look at ERAS, and they give you tips on how you can speak to your children. They give you links to how you can talk about it. So trustee Beliza, it doesn't say parents in here, but it doesn't say teachers either, but teachers are working every day, parents are working every day. And I hope our parents are using the huge resources that are available in this city and in our schools, uh, as much as possible. And if you have any questions, if you have any concerns, our staff are there for you. They're there for you to answer your true questions about what your baby needs. So if we, if it's a motion to say, hey, we need to get better, of course we want to get better, but please acknowledge what the heck's happening. This is not a fly-by-night issue. This has been going on for many years. Um, and so people need to get to the table and, and, um, yeah, keep working like we all have been, day in and day out.
Alright, I'm going to go to trustee Larson.
Thank you. Um, uh, I, I definitely support this motion. I, I like how it's written, and I like how, whether the word, you know, we used review, you used a different word, that, that happens all the time. Our staff always reviews things before they make changes. Um, and it, it's, it's a wise thing because the world is changing constantly. One thing I do want to make very clear, I want to thank trustee de Blotney for the respectful way that she brought this motion, this amendment to the motion, with the respectful way that she addressed, uh, trustee Belize's motion, thanking him to bringing it forward, and how you handled that. I'm, I'm most impressed, and I want to thank you for that.
Okay. Alright, uh, I think, taking my turn. Uh, you know, when I look at artists or listening to our discussion tonight, I think it's really important that, you know, although some people may have some sort of differing opinions, overall, I mean, I think we have more things in common than we have differences. Uh, I think we all want the best for our kids, and when it comes to drug and, and education, we want to have the best possible program. I, I don't think that's lost on anyone here. Um, how you do it, I guess, is, 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 uh, is maybe the question. You know, when I first read, um, trustee Belize's motion, um, you know, I looked at it, I thought, um, okay, uh, identify, identify opportunities to expand district-wide substance use awareness. I didn't see that as, let's replace what we're doing now with what I'm, what I'm putting forward here. Uh, I saw it as kind of an add-on. Um, and so, you know, like, I wasn't overly offended by that part. Uh, I did have some questions in his, in his rationale, in that some of the things that he talked about in his rationale didn't seem to jive with the motion. So, you know, there's concern there. Now, with trustee de Blotney's amendment, uh, which is very similar to trustee, uh, Belize's, uh, 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 motion, um, I thought that, uh, it was a, she made some changes. Uh, this whole thing about this, and I don't know, maybe I'm making a bigger deal of it than it really is, but this sort of one week of, week-long sort of, uh, program to educate everyone. Um, I mean, we all know that, uh, these problems exist fifty-two weeks a year, not just one week a year. Uh, and, you know, uh, it really does need to be embedded into our programs, into our, our curriculum and so forth, so that it, it's, it's not just seen as a seven-day-a-year thing where we get together, uh, as trustee Sargent pointed out. But, um, you know, in terms of where we started tonight to where we are with, we started with the motion from trustee Beliza, uh, I think, um, I think trustee de Blotney has built on it and has made it better. And, uh, so for that, I think we all should be pleased because the, you know, the, the better the motion, hopefully the better the actions that we take. Um, and so I will be supporting, uh, trustee de Blotney's motion as well, uh, because I, I think it builds on what trustee Belize has written, and, uh, and I'm all for that. So on that note, did I call the question? Actually, oh, sorry, you may have the last word on this.
Okay. Yeah, so what I want to make clear is that, uh, none of us sitting at this table, um, in the gallery, on Zoom, wherever, uh, want young people to misuse, um, substances. And we know that just say no doesn't always work. I wish it did. But, um, what's needed now is evidence-based, um, uh, programs that our, um, our, our community partners can, uh, help us with and, and are being presented now and keep our kids from dying. You know, of course, we need to teach students that the healthiest choice is not to use substances, uh, but I think we should also acknowledge is that, that some kids are still going to try it. And if they do, we want them to have the knowledge and, uh, tools to stay safe. And, um, as, one time, all it takes is one time, and that could be fatal. So, you know, it's also important that that one time might not kill them, but they, they could be, have brain damage or cognitive impairment. You know, there's all kinds of reasons to do this right and to have the right people helping us to deliver programs to our students that are evidence-based and that teach our, teach our students, we, we have to tell our kids the truth. You know, we can't beat around the bush. Uh, in secondary, these kids are facing, um, you know, deadly drugs that are out there right now. And they may think they're getting what they, you know, is something else, and, and it's something completely different and it's game over. So, um, I just think that we need to work with, uh, our school district needs to work with the partner agencies and, and the community to deliver age-appropriate and evidence, evidence-based programs. And, uh, so that's what the motion's all about, and, um, I'm hoping, you know, to have it supported, but.
Can you please read out the motion one final time?
Okay.
Or sorry, just for your amendment.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, that's, that is the main motion, um, if it passes. So, uh, be it resolved that the Board of Education of School District Number Thirty-eight direct staff to identify opportunities to expand district-wide substance use awareness programs as part of the elementary and secondary school physical health and education curriculum and report back to the board on proposed next steps by March two thousand twenty-six. And further that staff review existing and new partnerships with community organizations, including Vancouver Coastal Health, Foundry, Richmond Addiction Services, Society, and Dare Be C.
Thank you. That's the amendment. Uh, I'm going to call the question, all in favor? Close? Motion is carried. Or sorry, the amendment is carried.
The amendment's carried.
The main motion.
The same.
Trustee Wong back in here?
It's become the part of the main.
It's still Dare Be C in it, though. She can, you can, she vote on that one?
Oh.
I don't know. Just vote.
Okay, let's just, uh, so now the main motion becomes. Okay, let's just, uh, so now the main motion becomes.
Difficult.
What? No, it's this is the main moment.
That becomes the main motion.
But again, the main motion does specify Dare BC. So for trustees in conflict, uh, that that is still.
You know what? I think we can let her stay. Discussion.
Discussion is close.
But the vote itself on the on the motion, because you're still voting on. You're still voting on a motion that involves a certain organization. Uh, with which a trustee is under conflict.
Can I say that I I just really think clearly in the hallway. Just like me, it's a director of the there. That was the the there is a company partner with the.
Okay.
With the with the school district, right? If you're under the board, the writer, you must welcome me in here. Right?
What?
All right, let's let's we're backtracking here. So. Um, Alice, we're gonna do, we're not gonna ask you to leave, but we're doing a vote. You you cannot participate in that vote, though.
Yeah, that's why you I can see here.
All right, but you know, I don't want you to leave the room and come back in.
Yeah.
So. We voted on the amendment, we passed amendment, so the amendment becomes the main motions. So. Trustee to Blotney, do you want to read the main motion?
I read it.
Well, I'll read it again.
Out. Okay. Uh, be it resolved that the board of education of Richmond's School District Number Thirty Eight Richmond Direct Staff. To identify opportunities to expand district wide substance use awareness programs as part of the elementary and secondary school physical health. And education curriculum and report back to the board on proposed next steps. By March two thousand twenty six and further that. Staff review existing and new partnerships with community organizations, including. Vancouver Coastal Health Foundry Richmond Addiction Services Society and Dare BC.
Looking for a second or two to the motion.
Oh, no, it's all been moved and everything. Now we need to.
New motion.
We need to vote on them this.
All right, let's call the question all in favor.
Comment, Ms.
Uh, call the question all in favor. Post. Okay, uh. Trustee, but Lisa, uh, didn't see a vote there.
I welcome the amendment and I welcome anything that would. Uh, involve awareness.
Okay. Oh, are you in favor of the motion or not? We're not, you can't have any more discussion. We're doing the vote now. So either you in favor.
Let me in favor of the.
Thank you. Okay, being, uh, all. Everyone's voted, the motion, the new motion is carried. All right.
Yeah.
Ah, all right, Rusty Wong, thank you, sorry for. Okay, so, um, get back to the original. This should be even interesting as well. So now we finish our our new business motion. We have questions from the public, uh. We have a list of names. All right. Uh, can we get Dean Billings? Come on up. Uh, no, you can talk after, uh, Phyllis. Gotta put you in order. Can't butt in.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm gonna make my points. This this is about the motion. Um, it's. After you voted for it, but it, um, I think there's some discretionary room in what the staff look at, so it's probably fine. Um, I'm gonna make it pointed on, uh, just one one specific topic. So, I mean, as for. Folks who aren't where I'm, I have two kids in the district. I I, uh, uh, am the secretary with the Richmond District PAC. These are my own views. I preferred the original motion, um, but they're not that much different. Um, so I I you guys mentioned a couple of times that everybody agrees on all the importance of the issue. There's lots of disagreement within, um, within. Uh, folks though about the exact, um, stuff in. We had a bunch of presentations at the district pack. Um, on dare at the elementary school level. Um, the. The response about erase is that it's not really a program. It's, um, it's resources. Um, and that's that's relevant for what what I think my focus is here in in my comments. Um. What I don't see enough actually is is research on the topic. Um, now that might sound odd because, you know, Vancouver Coastal and there's all these organizations that typically. Um, are are evidence based research. I I, uh, I I did speak with a professor of public health evaluation. Uh, on this and she pointed me to two papers. Uh, one was on Dare BC. Um, that's from twenty sixteen and it's California data. Um, and the other was a survey by from SFU chart, SFU's chart lab from their faculty of health science. And they did a survey of, they got data from thirty one of the six district districts. And they have ten programs. Um, so this is not delivered by staff. These are, um, external, um, providers. Um, Botvin is one, uh, Dare is one of them, but also a bunch of others. Um, and the outcome of that is that none of those are being studied in sort of like a peer reviewed kind of way that you might expect from. An issue that doesn't have as much politics. Like if you look at smoking cessation programs and that evaluation, it's super clear. Right? Whereas I think for the school district, one of the things that's frustrating is we, I don't believe that you can tell us. That this district has less of a drug issue than. Any other district. I don't think you have data that you can show us that. There's anecdotal evidence. It's totally true. Uh, we're not the worst district in the in the in the province, but I don't believe you guys have a systematic way to actually show us that that's true or that what what direction it's going. Um, so I that that's initially what what pointed me in this direction. The other thing, I I think if I'm surprised, I don't think you can find any studies. Um, that are funded by SHIRK on on the evaluation. So my my my, I guess, I don't know if you call them friendly amendments or whatever, but you can probably just read them into the amendment or the. Proposal you have, that you consider whatever approaches you're gonna try, that they get measured. Right? That like that, whatever the outcomes are, if you've got two or three programs that we'd like to see. Like what the actual outcomes are. Uh, again, if you look at the studies that were done on dare or smoking cessation, you will see. Like uptake rates or down rates. I don't think we can see that from anything you're doing.
Okay, I'm just gonna interrupt for just a second. Generally, um, we're looking for questions. But people know, but you can still make, uh, opinions as well, uh, but the limit is sort of like a couple of minutes. You've been waiting very patiently. So, uh, can you wrap it up in about a minute?
That that's pretty much it. Um, again, that there's I'll 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 click send on the email and send it all to you. But again, there's there's. It doesn't seem very evident how we know that whether your programs are working or not, particularly, I guess, the updated version of that amendment. It would all kind of get just melded in with the rest of, I guess, somebody's PE grade or something like that. We wouldn't really be able to tell whether what would kind of impact that has. And it's obviously important. We'd like better data than that.
Thank you. Uh, next person on the list, Kevin Lual. I pronounced that right? Last name?
Uh, Law, Law, Kevin Law, yeah. Uh, I'm Kevin Law. Uh, I am, uh, a father of two kids. Uh, I, uh, searched the many of the drug, uh, drug, uh, loyalty from the internet and I. And we know that, uh, drug addiction is a mental health issue with drug use, right? Uh, if we don't use drug, there's no, uh, drug addiction, uh, addiction, uh, drug addiction issue. Uh. Uh, once, once you got addicted and maybe you need hundreds of thousands of dollars to. Uh, do the, uh, treatment, uh, or recover. Uh, and then maybe you were worried about your, uh, for the relapse of all your whole, whole life. Uh, so this 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 situation is, uh, maybe like the, uh, disease, uh. In the, uh, medical treatment, uh. Uh, maybe, uh, you only need, uh. Uh, the 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 drug prevention is like the immunization. Uh, you only need to spend, uh, a few dollars to get immunized. And, uh, to avoid, uh, some special disease, right? Uh, but if you don't get immunized. And get some disease, maybe you need to get, uh, maybe you need to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to. Uh, to to, uh, do the, uh, treatment, maybe maybe some disease you will never cure. Uh, for. For drug, uh, for a drug issue, uh, prevention, maybe it's like immunization. And treatment is like a, uh, medical treat, uh, treat, uh, treatment. Uh, and harm reduction, uh, in my opinion, is like the emergency department. Maybe we 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 were, uh, don't, we were never used, uh, emergency department to replace the whole hospital, right? So. Uh. The current, uh, situation is that we don't do the prevention. Enough. Uh, may I I ask you all question?
Yeah, actually his question period. So.
Yeah.
But I'm gonna say that we're getting close to your time, so if you can get to your question or if you just have more comments, that's fine, but about another minute.
Okay, uh, how many doses do do you, uh, and did you did for the COVID nineteen? One dose, two dose or three dose or more? I I think the most, uh, uh, were asked to do two more, right? Prevention is like the same, the same situation. One dose, not enough. Now, you, you know, you know, the from the statistics, the death from the drug overdose is higher and higher every, every year. Right? So, uh. Like the medical disease, maybe we just spent a few dollars to avoid some disease. But but some some, uh, if you don't, may maybe that's that's the the, maybe you take your time. Uh, maybe you were spending for like or death from some disease or or some, uh. Uh, very, uh, serious disease, right?
Okay, so your message basically is it's about prevention, the importance of prevention.
Yes.
Now, we need to really put our, you know, put our emphasis on that.
Yeah, yeah, but I say that.
Okay.
Like like the immunization, one dose for some diseases are not enough.
All right, thank you.
Uh, and, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, uh. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Connie, you're you're up.
Thank you. My name's Connie Huang. President of the RDPA. Yeah, suppose I want to present this letter, but I think I don't need that. So. I just want to say yes. Um, I totally agree, um. Certain trustee sergeant said, uh, parenting is very important. Uh, if every parent go to the website to see the resource and then teach the kids, so we don't need teacher, right? So why we need teacher? That because some parent cannot do some part of the important things. That's why we need the student education. And then we need teacher. And also. Uh, Belizea trustees, so whatever he mentioned on that, uh, cause for. Sub- substantive user awareness. Um, prevention, so we for district. So I think this is a very good idea. So I don't know. Can do that or not. So everything's on you guys, right? So for parents' side, for sure. Every parent don't like kids take the drugs or wake or smoke. Either way, if you you are the grandma or grandpa and also parents. So no one likes the kids take drugs. So if you ask parent, do you want this cost? Yes. Yeah, finish. Thank you.
Thanks, honey. All right, um, that concludes. Are there any more questions? Sorry. Oh, come on up. Just state your name and I know you already said it, but just.
Yeah, hi, everyone. I'm Phyllis Tang, Richmond resident. Great to see everyone again.
You're on the list here. Sorry.
No, it's all good. Yeah. I I want to take this opportunity to thank trustee Rod Belizea for bringing forth this, um. His motion originally on substance use awareness because it automatically creates the awareness and brings awareness to general public that. Um, because I hear that so many trustees are claiming that we are in a deep crisis right now. That means what has been done in the past has been extremely or very or either very ineffective. And that is the reason why, uh, one of the trustees feel, uh, compelled to be bringing forth the motion. Bringing up, uh, the substance use awareness. So I thank you for that. Now. Um, one thing that I want to thank also trustee sergeant for bringing up is that it seems like we have a very tight budget. Or the school board has a very tight budget. So I do have a question and some suggestions and food for thought for everyone. Especially for the staff who might be, um, taking time to bring recommendations to the board to consider. Does that mean despite how, um. The school board or staff members have been engaged in either research or projects or reviewing past work and putting money or. Taxpayers' dollars into, uh, these projects for many years. Um, because I see that trustees feel that they've been, uh, involved and engage in these projects for many years. That has our tax dollars been used effectively? Given that we're still in a deep crisis despite like all the work, all the hard work that our trustees or our staff members have been doing. So I I just want to like bring up my concern. Does that mean our tax dollars has not been effectively used? And does that mean we need to, um, not only do more, but change the course of action? Like, does it mean that what we've done in the past was not a good use of our tax dollars? And that's why it's time to be doing something more effectively or that we need to completely change course and do something else such as. Um, more, uh, awareness on preventing, uh, people from, uh. Getting, uh, I guess. Certain consequences from being involved in substance use. So I just want to bring that up and bring up my concern. And as well, um, I have a question, uh, which like I welcome others to, I guess, answer my questions at. A time that's convenient for them. It's just for my own learning. Um, I was aware that, uh, there has been a mental health awareness week sometime, uh, with. Uh, our students and Richmond School Board, and I was just wondering why, um, that has been. Um, I guess, um, popularly well received versus where there's also just a suggestion of a substance use awareness. Prevention week is also a one, one week or potentially more, uh, suggestion or a project, but, um. It's also a seven day thing. It's it's unlike mental health awareness is not needed three hundred sixty five days like a year. So I was just wondering maybe why is there such a difference in the reception of bringing awareness? Because they're both important, substance use awareness and prevention work awareness versus mental health awareness. So I just want to know why. Um, it seems like there's partiality in, or at least maybe just in my limited understanding. I feel like there's partiality in, uh, assuming that mental health awareness is, um, much more important than substance use awareness. And it'll be great if someone can address that for me.
Thank you for the question. Um, I'm gonna get, yeah, great. Uh, uh, superintendent UC, can you respond to her question?
Uh, yes, I thank you very much for your question. Um, well, first of all, there are a number of, uh, national and provincial. Uh, initiatives, uh, or, you know, you say projects. Um, first of all, as you can appreciate, as a school district. We follow the BC curriculum. Every school district, there are sixty school districts in the in the province and at the risk of answering your question with another question. Uh, it's, um, perhaps if some of these, uh, work isn't happening. Um, it's actually quite distracting talking to you with your camera pointed at me. Please, um, so, yeah, please. So it's, um. Uh, at the risk of, like I said, put respond to your question with another question, if this good work isn't happening. Perhaps we would would have seen significant more issues in our communities. Uh, so it would be equivalent to saying if the government is investing millions, hundreds of millions of dollars in healthcare. hundreds of millions of dollars in healthcare, I would say that we still have people losing their lives. And I don't pretend to be the expert to answer that question. What I would say to you is that, um, you can have, uh, awareness wake of different events in schools, and we, we, we get away from teaching and learning. Uh, so while I recognize that we have a responsibility as a school system, and I appreciate the comment around, parents are significant partners in this work. Uh, so this is not a question of, on the value and the, the discussion we are having. This is serious. I think you've heard every single trustee around this table to speak to this, the importance of this. Nobody's denying. So the work is happening, continues to happen in the district. But as you can appreciate, uh, we cannot have, you know, one week of this event, one week of that event, one week of that. Teachers have, teachers have, have a responsibility under the school act, uh, to deliver some core competence, uh, competencies in terms of the curriculum. And parents have that expectation when your children come to school that we have that. So that's not to minimize the fact that if you have a week of something, that you do that. But again, remember, school districts, uh, also, uh, are not, we, we follow the direction of the, of the, of the government or the ministry. So if, imagine if school boards were, uh, identifying different weeks dur- during the year for doing different activities. There are implications for that, of that, because we have, I think you heard the trustee mention earlier, we have collective agreement language. Uh, we have other responsibilities that school staffs are expected to do as part of their work. And, and that is really grounded in, not only in the school act, but in collective agreement language. So I think you will understand that, uh, the instructional minutes, there are so many instructional minutes that is designated for core curriculum delivery in schools. Uh, to be successful in the academic work, but also focused on their, their, their health and well-being. And hopefully, you will see that the work that is happening, uh, in the district, not just in this district, all districts, uh, that healthy lifestyle, and that's why the curriculum, that's why all of this is embedded within the K-12 physical and health education curriculum. And so I'm, I'm pleased that the amendment, the, the motion that was passed tonight. So again, augment to the extent possible within that curriculum and look elsewhere in terms of partnerships. And I, I, you know, I just want, the last comment I will make, and I know that, um, Mr. Billings has left the room. Lot of the data is actually collected by V C H. School districts don't spend hundreds of thousands of dollars doing research, right? We're taking money away from the classrooms. You want us, you don't want us taking lots of money away from your, your children's learning. So we have to be, we have to be mindful of the scope in which we operate as a school system. So this year should be more than happy. You can Google it. They have all the data points, and they will tell you what, you know, municipalities, cities, you have the statistics. It's on the public website. So we don't, we don't have, we don't have the, the, the resources to conduct, uh, you know, longitudinal studies about this or about that within, within our system as a district. But I hope that's helpful. Thank you.
Um, now, Kevin Li, oh, okay, sorry. I knew there's another Kevin spelling was very similar.
Okay, I'll, I'll keep this short. Um, I just have questions. Um, like, you know, since we have, uh, current programs, uh, in the curriculums, do, do we know, like, you know, how effective it is? Like, do we have, uh, measurements on, like, the current program, how many students that they have help? Or, uh, you know, help to divert them from, like, consuming substance? So this is just like, it's, uh, something that the parent can view? And also, the current program, right, in the curriculum, is there any data that can inform the parents so they can understand what's being taught in school? So, uh, they can actually, that, you know, as parents.
Question, um, I'm going to encourage you, if you've not looked at the curriculum, because it's, it's a public document. I'm gonna suggest, if you've not had a chance to look at it, to look at the K-12 physical and health education curriculum, and there are explicit curriculum outcomes that are in each, at, at each grade level. Of course, age-appropriate in terms of what happens in, in kindergarten, in grade one versus what the commission looks like in grade eleven, grade twelve. So, uh, when you. Curriculum.
Hmm.
And all, for every grade, all the outcomes are listed there, so it's there. The information is right there for you. Very interesting, because, um, um, it's, um, one of the, one of the things that, um, uh, for any program or any intervention that you have in place, there is this, this assumption that, you know, there is, uh, if you do A, you get B. And we know that when we're dealing with very complex issues, complex issues around, uh, you know, this is, the, the physical and health curriculum is one of several ways in which, you know, information is shared with students. Parents play a critical role as well in terms of our, wha- what that support system looks like at home, working with, with, with the school system. We're all doing this work together as partners, right? Having said that, we know that some young people in, you know, uh, in, um, with all of this, might still make some wrong choices. But so the plan is that if we provide information to young people, hopefully, they will make right choices. They will make right choices. So if they make a mistake, hopefully, it, the, the mistake is not gonna be, uh, one that, unfortunately, might be, might, might lead to, to a very negative outcome. So the part of education and awareness is really making sure that young people have the information that they need. And I would also encourage parents to avail themselves to accurate information, uh, because it's unfortunate sometimes, uh, when I, when I hear a lot of wrong information presented as facts. And I would say, I would really encourage, uh, parents, uh, to, to avail themselves to accurate information, because that makes a big difference. But anyways, I, I, I don't, I hope that's helpful.
Okay, yeah. All right, folks, um, you're welcome to stay, but this isn't the most exciting stuff. But, um, so let's go on to our, um, standing committee reports, audit committee, uh, chairperson Yang.
Thank you, chairperson. Uh, next meeting is scheduled Tuesday, uh, January sixth, three thirty. Thank you.
Uh, education committee, uh, trustee Larson.
Next meeting is Wednesday, November twelfth at five o'clock. Pardon me, six o'clock.
Hey, facilities in building. Uh, I'm the chair of that one. And, uh, we have minutes of the meeting are held on, held September third or attached for information. Uh, meeting was held on Wednesday, October first. The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November the fifth, at four thirty. Finance and legal, uh, chairperson, uh, sergeant, and I believe you have a recommendation.
I do have a recommendation, which I'll move. Whereas the Board of Education, School District Thirty-eight Richmond, is paying for the expenses incurred by the trustees in the discharge of their duties. Be it resolved that in, in accordance with the school act, the Board of Education, District Thirty-eight Richmond approves trustees' expenses paid during the three-month period ended September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, in the amount of one thousand dollars, six hundred and eighty-three and sixty cents.
Can I get a second there, please? Seconded by trustee Wong. Any discussion? Any no discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Uh, recommendations carried.
Thank you, and our next meeting is November twelfth at ten A M.
Uh, policy committee, chairperson Tablotny.
Yep, uh, there's minutes of a meeting held September fifteenth that are attached, and a meeting was held on Tuesday, October fourteenth. And the next meeting is scheduled for Monday, November tenth at eleven A M.
Right, moving on to our board committee and representative reports. Anyone from the council board liaison committee?
Um, I believe, uh, in chairing that committee, it's coming up next Wednesday, on November fifth.
Our B C S T A rep, anything you want to share?
That's, um, um, of course, we've got our A G M coming up, and the only other thing was, um, Alice, I can't remember, or pardon me, trustee Wong, Wong, um, you, did you sit in on the, um, provincial council, or is that still to come? I can't remember the days.
About twenty-four.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Okay, uh, B C B C rep, is there anything?
Yeah, the, um, there was a call, uh, on the twenty-first, uh, for, um, board chairs and for trustee reps, and, um, I couldn't find my notes. I have them. Um, but, uh, there will be a synopsis, and I'll make sure that everyone gets that information. It's all about bargaining right now, because everybody's, uh, you know, bargaining at this point in time. So, um, that's, that's it for me. And, oh, and there's a symposium in November, which I will be attending.
Okay, we have no correspondence for action or information, which leads us. Goodbye trustee Yang, seconded by trustee, uh, uh, Ross. Eliza. I think at ten thirty, I think shuts off. Anyways, looking, uh, we got a little second, all in favor? Meeting adjourned. Folks, thank you very much for sitting through long meeting and, uh, drive home safely. Uh, trustees, we're still not finished. Uh, we still have to finish off our in-camera.